Good morning. I'll call to order the April 5, 2016 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We will start with a flag salute led by Supervisor Montgomery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a reading of our meeting procedures, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, April 5, 2016. Addendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. However, please note that the board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. When you speak, clearly state your name for the record, and be aware there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. Please place all cell phones in silent mode. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Next is consent agenda. This is a list of many items that we are anticipating considering under one motion, but we're happy to pull any of them for specific discussion if anyone from the public would like that, or if any of my colleagues would like that.
With that...
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda, as is all those... Roll call, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Durand?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Wegant?
Yes. Now is the time for public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda. If you would like to do so, please come forward and state your name. See no public comment. Next is board member reports. Are there any board members who have reports?
Oh, I just wanted to... Chairman, I just wanted to recognize the county for its economic development breakfast that we had last week. I thought it was a great opportunity to hear about things that were going into the county and recognize a lot of the folks that work in the county and, business-wise, were provided awards for the things that they did. And it was great to see some of our counterparts that work in the other jurisdictions that really make Placer County a great place to live and work and recreate.
Great. Great breakfast. Thanks, Jack. I see no other supervisor committee reports. So with that, our first timed item is at 10:00. We're going to start with our department items. And the very first one with Health and Human Services wastewater regulation amendments onsite wastewater sewage. And I see Wes come out forward to present this item. There it is. I recognize the septic system there.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. A board of your environmental health division of the HHS Department is very pleased to bring forward for your consideration our intent to submit Placer County's local agency management program for onsite sewage disposal to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board for state approval and implementation. Onsite wastewater systems, also known as septic systems, allow development of parcels at locations that are removed from centralized wastewater treatment plants. They don't have the ability to connect. They put in a septic system, and when properly sited, designed, operated, and maintained, septic systems treat wastewater to reduce the polluting impact on the environment and, most importantly, to protect public health. There are more than 25,000 onsite systems already installed and operating in Placer County, with the vast majority of these operating properly. The new state policy will not affect any of the existing 25,000 systems that are in Placer County now. There have been on occasions, however, in California where onsite systems, for a varied list of reasons, have not satisfactorily protected either water quality or public health. In response to these problems, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted Resolution Number 2012-0032 on June of 2012, adopting a water quality control policy for citing, design, operation, and maintenance of onsite systems. And that became effective May 13, 2013. The policy requires that local agencies adopt minimum standards, called Tier One standards, which will allow only septic system designs to be installed under local control of the simplest type. The Tier One option would result in a severe limitation in the development of parcels in areas that can only support a standard, simple septic system. Under the Tier One option, any septic system other than the most simple designs would need to be approved from the state every time a house is built in Placer County that have limited soil resources or other limiting factors. State policy, fortunately, however, also allows a Tier Two option that will allow the Environmental Health Division to continue regulating these systems under a local agency management program, or LAMP. A LAMP that is approved under the Tier Two provision provides alternative methods from the Tier One to protect water quality and public health. The LAMP, when approved, becomes the standard by which authorized local agencies will regulate onsite systems. An approved LAMP is equivalent to the state issuing a conditional waiver of waste discharge requirements for onsite systems, with the exception that it remains with the local agency and that no further authorization will be needed. The Environmental Health Division is currently responsible for regulating onsite systems, and we've been implementing a successful program here in Placer County since the early 1980s. Our current local program has been created by Placer County staff working with the wastewater advisory committee that you have appointed, and the chairman of that committee, Mr. Bloom, is here today. With the intent to apply to the regional board an application to implement the Tier Two option that will allow Placer County to continue providing local oversight of onsite systems using practices that are suited to the diverse geologic conditions that are found in Placer County, our program has also been created to meet or exceed the design requirements of the state policy and to ensure the best opportunity for comprehensive management of onsite systems, public health, and water quality control within Placer County. So the Placer County LAMP will consist of three parts. Part one is the Placer County Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article 8.24. Part two is a Placer County Onsite Wastewater Treatment Systems Technical Manual, and part three is a specific checklist provided by the regional board to ensure Placer County's LAMP is in compliance with the state policy. By working with the regional board, we will ensure that the Tier Two policy requirements in our program will meet or exceed the intent of the policy by providing a regulatory framework that protects public health, the environment, and our groundwater resources while maintaining local control with the least impact to development as possible. A real brief overview of how we got to where we are today. Assemblywoman Jackson, in 1999, brought forward Assembly Bill 885. Probably all heard of that Assembly Bill. It's been around for, well, since 1999. It's amended in the year 2000 to be a statewide regulation. Originally, it was a coastal impact. I believe around Malibu, there were some beach closers due to septic system failures. That was signed into law in September of 2000. Then you got to fast forward to 2013 because the state was on it, and 13 years later, they finally moved the policy forward after working with RCRCC, CSAC, and some of the environmental health departments to realize that the local agency implementation was the best effective method. So the regional boards amended their basin plans to include the Tier Two option in the local program in May 13 of 2014, and it requires the counties to submit our program this next May, so by May 13 of next month. Regional board review of the LAMP can go on for a year after that, and the counties are to resubmit the LAMP by May of 2018 with any changes the state requires. Then there's an arbitration session that can go to 2019, but I really don't think any of that will be necessary because our wastewater advisory committee and staff have updated the sewage disposal ordinance and manual to already be in alignment with the state policy. We don't expect a whole lot of changes. Placer's program is progressive. It includes options for engineered systems and design as a solution that would work where conventional systems will not, and we've been installing those for over a decade. It is believed that our program significantly conforms with the state policy already, and only minor modifications will be necessary to our local program. A few of the changes that will be necessary is a geotechnical review for slopes that exceed 30 percent. So if we're going to put a leach field in an area with a hilly slope greater than 30 percent, we'll have to have a geotechnical review to make sure that the hydro loading from the wastewater won't cause landslides or slumping. Good idea. That could destroy the leach field and cause a serious public health concern. We don't think it'll be a major impact as most of the areas, we try to avoid 30 percent or greater slopes, and most of the ones in Placer County who have exceeded that, the geotechnical review shows that it can handle the hydro loading. Increased setbacks to surface water and wells used in public drinking water systems, this won't affect the 90 or so systems that are already in. It'll only be new ones, and the setback increases from about 100 to 150 feet. We don't really think that'll be a major impact. More restrictive soil conditions by increasing minimum soil depth from 18 to 24 inches. That's the effective soil depth under the leach field where the wastewater percolates to. The state is going to require another six inches of what they call effective soil. Again, a fairly minor change. Requiring supplemental treatment prior to disposal of the seepage pits is probably going to be the biggest impact to Placer County areas around Sheridan, near the Roseville townships. Have a real hard-packed soil that goes down several feet. We have to actually drill through it and get into more permeable sandy soils underneath. So rather than a trench-type system, it'll have to be a seepage pit design, and the state's requiring supplemental treatment prior to disposal to that type of design. So really, it'll be good that we can still develop those parcels, but it'll be a little more expensive to build a home if that is required. Some of the additional changes that are positive, water-scent certified homes can now use smaller systems. So a home that goes in and puts in low-flow showerheads and toilets and that kind of thing comes certified as water-scent. They can put in a smaller system, and then homes that expand and put in additional bedrooms can probably keep the additional system they have now without modifying or expanding their septic system if they install that. Just saves water. It's a good idea, anyway. Off-grid power systems is considered a permanent power source, so those real remote locations, if they have solar cells and supplemental treatments required, pumps and sensors and whatnot, solar is now considered a power source acceptable. Onsite maintenance monitoring is consistent among providers. The state has clarified that to remove ambiguity between jurisdictions. Also a good thing. And variances to section to address repair systems that might not fully meet the policy is also a very old home with a very small lot, bailing system. We use best available practices and technology to figure out how to get them repaired and back online. Even if it doesn't quite meet all of the state policy, due to the fact that it's an existing home, the state will allow us to write a variance, which is a very good thing. We expect to run into that in the future. So what we're requesting of the board's actions today is to repeal and reenact Placer County Ordinance, Chapter Eight, Article 8.24, to encompass all of the suggestions and recommendations made by staff in the wastewater advisory committee over the last five years and to align the ordinance up at the state. There was also some changes, as of yesterday, by lead council, I believe, that that would be the version that we're asking you to accept, repeal, and reenact. Adopt a resolution approving the amendments to the onsite sewage manual as recommended by the wastewater advisory committee, and adopt a resolution to authorize submission of the Placer County Local Agency Management Plan to the California Central Valley Regional Board for consideration as the Tier Two option in compliance with the new state policy. And we'd ask for a continuance to the Tahoe meeting for that so that the ordinance will be effective. As we send it to the state, we'll have an actual ordinance number to plug in there and they can see it's an official approved county ordinance. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions you might have regarding this.
Jack, then Jim.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this forward. I had a question. I know you and I and Michael Johnson worked through a situation out on the west side involving a parcel where they weren't going to split the parcel, so there was obviously a concern about a lot and subdivision. But they wanted to add a home. And it sounds to me, once you get through all of this, that basically this ordinance codifies the solution that you came to, to allow that homeowner to build that home on that property. Is that basically what this does?
Yeah, if I remember that correctly, I believe it would. If the parcel split and they wanted to add another septic system to it, we could have done that. Or if they wanted to just add, since they had such large parcel, I believe...
Right.
They wanted to add a new home, and they wanted to add on to their existing system, yeah, with water-scent certified.
Yeah, they wanted to build a granny flat, basically, for the in-laws.
We have a little more latitude now.
That's good. Okay. All right, thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Wes. Is this the culmination of the notorious AB 885?
It is. Yeah, it's been lurking for...
Years.
What, 16 years, right?
Right. Since I see my friends from California State Association of Counties here, and I serve on their board, as well as the rural county representatives of California...
Right.
The actions that they took, those two organizations took to put this whole thing to bed impresses on us the importance of those organizations. And I remember being in two meetings with two state senators, not at the same time, different meetings, and we brought up the issue of AB 885. And in each meeting, they said, "What's that?" And so it just shows how, you know, one assembly member can make, pass, get a law passed, and by the time it gets implemented, the assembly member is termed out.
Right.
And then the regulatory agencies start to take control. So anyhow, I'm glad to see this. We really fought hard to make some sense out of this.
We really have.
It was one-size-fits-all, and it just didn't make sense. So anyhow, I'm glad that we're finally getting...
Thank you, Jim. So those are, yeah, RCRCC and CSAC were paramount in us developing Williams' regulations.
Jennifer?
Wes, thank you. I want to really echo Supervisor Holmes' comments on this. This was, I would say, five years ago, particularly contentious in the Foothill area. We had literally hundreds of people at our MAC meetings, which is, for those of you who attend MAC meetings, pretty uncommon. Very concerned about what this meant because, at the time, the state really was focusing on that one-size-fits-all and was really not willing to have the conversation about letting counties make their own decisions about the best way to manage onsite wastewater treatment systems. I think we've got to a very good result here. My one question that I have that's sort of a technical question is, do we have any concerns in that Foothill region just because of the depth of soil from that increase to 18 to 24?
We do have some concern. Most of them are going to have more effective soil, anyway. So the few that do have a limited amount of effective soil under that, the state is also allowing some latitude to design ways around it. We could even bring in some engineered fill, sort of like a mound system with some of the new technology with drip emitters and pressurized drip lines subsurface that would give us the 24 inches of effective soil needed and probably some nice landscaping while we're at it. We're getting better at this.
That's great. I'm really glad to hear that because one of the concerns that was raised, and it was an absolutely legitimate concern, was, you know, I have a piece of property. Am I not going to be able to install a septic system?
Right.
And my understanding of the law and the actions that we're being asked to take today regarding our own ordinance is, yes, you are going to be able to install a septic system. It may need to be engineered, as you describe it, in a slightly different fashion than maybe a traditional septic system, but we're going to be able to get people to construct homes and appropriately take care of their onsite waste.
That's an excellent assessment. We have a fantastic wastewater advisory committee as well. Mr. Bloom, the chairman's here, like I said, that he have representatives from a large array from the community, everybody who has stakeholders in it that look at our manual, our ordinance, our policies, technology, to really work with us to come up with the best solutions possible. We have a lot more latitude now than we ever had before, and once the LAMP is approved by the state, we'll have the full authority to use that creativity.
I'd actually like to hear from Rick, if I could, just to get a little bit of feedback on how the process went through the whack. I have a hard time saying that because I'm used to saying whackmac, but how the process went through the whack and just kind of a little bit of insight into where we ended up from your perspective.
Thank you. My name is Rick Bloom. I'm actually in the real estate business, which is why I was put on this committee, talking about the different areas that we covered on the stakeholders. We had engineers, we had architects, we had septic tank builders and installers and cleanings, and we had 13 different things, basically, that were part of our stakeholders. And me personally, I think I started on this committee when I was about this big and have been there, I think, it's about 15 years, roughly, the whole duration of AB 885, which became on my forehead wherever I went to a meeting of real estate people. They're saying, "Are we going to be able to get a septic system after this goes into effect?" And so we managed to work through all of that, and it was just an incredible process that this group of people that worked on this issue from start to end was just incredible for me. I chaired the committee for quite a long time and enjoyed it immensely because it was fun to see all of these different avenues come together and make, "Yeah, that one's no good. We don't want to deal with that." And we were able to work through the State Water Quality Control Board and get around that. So it was just, the process was terrific. Staff was just incredible. The things that they did and the number of books, I probably have a stack this big of different iterations of the manual and the ordinance. And working with it, the people were extremely cooperative. They had a lot of input from a lot of different places that made, all of a sudden, we thought we were going here, and now we're going over there because that one thing made a big change. So all is well. I am thrilled to be able to get to this point, coming to you, asking for, or making a recommendation to you to do the manual, do the ordinance, and move it forward. Yes, we've got a couple more tweaks to do, but that's nothing compared to the 15 years that we've put into it to get to this point. So if you have any other questions?
Just thank you for your service. I know this was, based on my own experience, a highly contentious issue, and it sounds like we really got to where we needed to get to. So thank you for your hard work.
You're more than welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, are there any questions from members of the public or statements from members of the public? Did you have something more, Wes?
No, I just wanted to know if you had any other questions.
You know, I do have, actually, one technical question. You've mentioned the subsequent treatment on the valley floor systems. What is that exactly?
The seepage pit, the change in that. Essentially, there's a very hard, you're probably familiar with the really hard soils, really very hard-packed soils. They go down several feet, up to eight, nine feet, 10 feet. We have to actually drill through those. They're not permeable at all, so the wastewater cannot percolate through that. So we have to get into the sandy soils below that in order to put in a leach field, basically. So you can't put in a traditional, you know, leach trench. You have to put in what they call a seepage pit. Because the soils are sandy below that, and the wastewater percolates rather rapidly through it, the state's requiring the supplemental treatment be done, so an additional treatment tank and a pump tank be added to reduce the pollutants before it's discharged into those. So we can still develop those parcels, you know, or permit them to be developed. We just have to add extra equipment, which will cost a little bit more to build, basically.
Thanks. So what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make the motion to adopt the resolution to amend onsite sewage manual and adopt resolution to authorize submission of Placer County Local Agency Management Plan, LAMP, application to the California Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board.
I just wanted to point out the actions before the board today are to introduce the ordinance and to waive the first reading of the ordinance and to adopt the resolution amending the onsite sewage manual. At our next meeting, the board will be able to adopt the ordinance and will adopt the resolution submitting the...
Yeah, that too.
...LAMP to the state.
I second that.
Motion, Holmes, second. Montgomery, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Yeah.
Okay. We're going to drop down to department item, Community Development Resource Agency Sustainable Groundwater Management Act update, and Brett is going to present that to us.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman and Board, Brett Story, Community Development Resource Agencies. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Your board, last November, directed staff to move forward with this program to meet all of the CIGMA regulations, so we're here today to provide you an update of where we are and where we're going. First of all, SEEDRA and environmental engineering are kind of co-leads on this because it has an administrative side and has a very technical side. In fact, the stuff Wes was talking about, if we bring the environmental engineering guys up here, they're going to talk about those soils and those waters, and too much depth for you, but there are a lot of requirements in this area that we are coming up to speed on. We also get support from county council, the ag commissioner, Health and Human Services, Communications Department, and, believe it or not, the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Wegant has generously volunteered his time to assist us in this matter because mostly what we deal with are agriculture-based groundwater users, so we want to make sure that we get their involvement, we get their understanding, and we supply them with the opportunity to provide us the right information and move forward. We're working with a, meeting regularly with a Wes Placer team to develop the groundwater sustainability agency. We work with also Sacramento County and Sutter Counties in that process. In fact, after today's board meeting, I have meetings with them to go over how we're going to coordinate this whole effort to meet those state requirements. We also have some ongoing discussions with South Sutter Water District, and why that's important to be distinct about them, they actually straddle both Placer County and Sutter County, and they are purely ag-based, and so they're wanting to understand how the land use agencies work and how the ag is going to work together, so we're extending those discussions. The one nice thing is all those parties agree to do one groundwater sustainability plan for the entire basin, which is going to save us time and money and really be able to share our resources in the right kinds of ways. So we're really looking forward to that work. We have a pretty large public outreach system planned. We're required to, but for us, it's more important because it is so agricultural-based that we get everyone on board. We have a number of stakeholders that need to be valued in this process. Some are specific to the act, some are specific to what our needs as the county are. And to that end, we were asked to brief the Agricultural Commission of the county last December. We did so. The board was desirable to be helpful in this process, to pass along information and to be supportive of this effort, so that was really a good sign. Also, the Department of Water Resources for the state awarded a facilitation expert who has some background with agriculture specifically to assist our team. As with everyone in the state, we were awarded it a couple of months ago. We're still waiting to see how all that flows, but it should be here shortly, and then they'll work with our communications staff to really put a good outreach program together. On the order of grant funding, we won a grant, our first time in the barrel, for the Proposition One State Water Grant. We won $242,000. That will be brought back to your board as soon as, again, they awarded it. Now we're waiting for the contact and the actual agreement and contract. We'll make sure that our risk management and county council agree with it, bring it back to you for adoption. In lieu of that, we've already started an RFP process with the procurement division to support that. We will need a technical consultant to support us in that effort. We expect that work to begin around July or the next fiscal year, and it runs 18 months. We also, there was a draft groundwater sustainability plan that the state and DWR put out. We provided extensive comments for both the North American sub-basin as well as the Marthis Valley Basin, and they seem to be listening. Everyone is kind of coming back with the same thing. These are quite onerous requirements. They're quite expensive to perform, and so we're asking for some flexibility, particularly in the case we have two very sustainable basins. We're locked in there to this program because of the amount of people and the use of groundwater that we're in there. As long as we can keep them sustainable, we believe we can not have to do everything that someone in Tulare or Fresno County might have to do that's experiencing a different set of conditions. So we'll hold them to that and work with them on that. And just as another note, your board will receive an update on the Marthis Valley at your next meeting, timely up there. A little bit about the timeline to meet all of these regulations. We are in the process now of trying to settle on the agency partners in the North American Basin and the actual boundary. As I said, South Sutter Water District cuts across both, so we're trying to figure out where best to put the line. Sacramento County has already said it's at the Sacramento County line for them. Sutter County is still deciding what they want to do, so we hope to bring that back to your board in June to ratify that decision with you. We're also working on those principles of that agency, the bylaws, the governance, whether it'll be a joint powers authority or just an MOU. We're still working through that. And then who would be the lead agency in this partnership? We hope to bring that back to you by October timeframe so that we can meet all the other obligations. In the meantime, we're, as I said, we're building a plan, and we're going to conduct that stakeholder outreach over the spring, summer, and fall. stakeholder outreach over the spring, summer, and fall. We have to hit the agriculture community a little bit before they plant, sometime after, and certainly before and after they, they bring all their harvest in, and that, and we're really trying to work around their schedules on that. Again, we will, we will, at the end of the year, ask you to elect the governance option, whatever that might be, whatever the group decides as the, as the right decision for us. We'll bring that back to you for, for your support. Obviously, we're developing a budget. It'll take us time and really depends on whether we are a JPA or MOU, what those draft regulation plans entail for us. So we're, we're doing some preliminary work now, but we really need to get some more decisions made by the Department of Water Resources and state board before we can bring that back to you. And then again, we would bring that agency agreement back to you for your ratification. There's a number of technical, legal filings we would have to do. Our intention is to bring that to a conclusion by May because the deadline is June 30th of, of next year, and we want to make sure we're in on everything before the state looks at us funny. Kevin Bell here? Kevin Bell is here. I'm gonna pass it to my colleague, Kevin Bell, to talk a little bit about some technical details.
Good morning. As Brett mentioned, I'm Kevin Bell, the Environmental Engineering Program Manager with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. I've just got a couple of brief updates for you this morning. As Brett mentioned, we won a Proposition One Grant, and in order to be eligible for that grant, the entire North American Sub Basin within Placer County needed to be actively monitored, and there were some areas that were previously not actively monitored within Placer County. So in last November, your board authorized staff to request, or to apply to be, become a monitoring entity, and also to prepare a plan and submit that plan to the Department of Water Resources. In December, Department of Water Resources approved that, both the plan and the, the application to be a monitoring entity, which allowed us to be eligible to apply for that Proposition One Grant, which we later received. We are now beginning implementation of that monitoring plan and can, and completing some of the improvements that are necessary to a few of the wells in that area. And the data that we are gathering from that will be used to inform us as we move forward into the, the groundwater sustainability plan activities. Secondly, last month, we came to your board to discuss a, a boundary, basin boundary modification. And if you look at the map, you can see the blue dashed line is the boundary of the North American Sub Basin, and the yellow dashed line is the boundary of the South Yuba Groundwater Basin. As you see, there's a hatched area there that shows the South Yuba Sub Basin extending into the, into Placer County slightly. So we got permission from your board last month to, to apply for a boundary modification to realign that basin boundary with the Placer County, Yuba County lines, to make it simpler and more effective in terms of establishing groundwater sustainability agencies and regulate, or implementing the groundwater sustainability plan when we get to that point. So we, we submitted the application. DWR deemed the application complete, and we are currently in the 30-day public comment period. We don't anticipate that there would be any, any contesting of that application. We've got support from all of the local agencies that would be impacted, and so we, we believe that that will move forward. With that, I'm gonna pass it back to Brett.
Thank you, Kevin. And one last slide, and then we'll take questions on the fiscal impacts. We have been working this, obviously, the state gave us yet another unfunded mandate. We're trying to do our best to contain costs. We've got some really good agency partners. We estimated our cost for this last year was about $225,000, including all the consulting time. The funding has been appropriated and we are on track to, to not go over that. Our, our team partners, PC, Placer County Water Agencies, the City of Roseville, the City of Lincoln, and Cal American Water Company are, are also contributing. They have a separate pot, which we are not part of, but it's essentially like monies to support consulting and development of this entire process. At some point, when we create that GSA, we will all be one organization, whether it's a JPA or not, will be decided, but then we would all contribute funding into one organization and, and make a budget and, and work towards the solutions of building the plan and making it sustainable at that point. Next year's budget is being prepared right now, and it will be in your annual budget process, so you will see those numbers. We intend to utilize that Proposition One Grant for 242, and roughly $40-plus thousand will be for Kevin and my support time for managing and doing some of the tasks, and around $200,000 or so will be for, to pay for consultants. All of that work, though, will be towards the development of creating the GSA and getting a head start on the plan that, that is required by 2022. So we won't, we will be able to spend less on our side because of that state grant. And, and that's just the beginning. There are a couple of other grants we are looking at for both our portion of the basin, and then there's a large grant we are, in fact, I've got another meeting with Sacramento County today, looking at a very large grant of Prop One to support the modeling efforts that need to go on in the entire basin, so that we hopefully will be able to get some more funding through the state on this project. So with that, I'll, I'll end, and we'll, either Kevin or I will take any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brett. Kevin. Questions for the board? Jack?
Yeah, thanks Brett for bringing this forward. As you know, the water situation here in the state and Placer County, you know, is, is in a state of flux. And I know, you know, we've got various developments that are planned, you know, in the future. We're actually gonna be talking about one of these developments here, you know, later today. My biggest concern is not knowing how the sausage is made, and I'm gonna be very blunt here. If you think you're gonna come here and you're gonna get me to rubber stamp something that was done without knowing why it was put together the way it was, that's not gonna work. So I encourage you to communicate with all of us how negotiations, what the thought process is behind what goes into this plan. And you probably already know that, you know, with regards to PCWA, I've got some pretty, pretty harsh, serious concerns about that. You know that a letter went out last year about some concerns related to communication. I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus right now, but I know and I'm hopeful that those things get worked out moving forward. So this is a very serious and interesting issue for us, and I just wanna make sure that it's done the right way.
Yes, we, we are taking that. Michael Johnson has directed staff to work intently with Placer County Water Agency, the land developers, as well as all the groundwater, to make sure that we come back to your board at some point later on to provide you that information and those details so that we can decide what color sausage, how we're gonna cook that sausage.
I appreciate that.
I see another question or comments from the board. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Seeing none, we are, thank you. We're gonna now move to our first timed item at nine o'clock, but before we do that, I've been informed that there's someone who came here thinking that our meeting was gonna start at its traditional time, which is nine o'clock, and would like to address the board under public comment briefly. So if that person would like to do that, they can come forward and address the board under, just state your name for the record, please.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. My name's Avani, I'm from Newcastle, and I'm here to discuss the lack of public notification when the county sprays herbicides and chemicals for weed abatement. The four herbicide chemicals commonly used in our county are Glycophate Pro-4, Glycophate Pro-concentrate, Sulfan, and Garland. Glycophate Pro-4 concentrate, used as a post-emergent weed killer, is used in combination with Surflan, a pre-emergent weed killer. Both chemicals are listed as hazardous to humans and to domestic animals. Both products also state to keep all persons, children, and pets, pets out of treated areas until the sprays have dried. In addition, Surflan explicitly labels is toxic to fish. Last spring, the World Health, the World Health Organization also listed Glycophate as a carcinogen to humans, stating there is limited evidence of carcinogenicity in humans for non-Hobbeskin lymphoma. The California EPA also originally classified Glycophate as possibly carcinogenic to humans in 1985. According to the World Health Organization, Glycophate also caused DNA and chromosomal damage in human cells. One study in community residents reported increase of blood markers of chromosomal damage after Glycophate formulations were sprayed nearby. Currently, the practice by the Rose Division is to spray herbicide chemicals up to three times per year, starting in the spring. Trucks outfitted with spray nozzles drive around, distributing about a two-foot strip along the roadways. They're not just desolate county roads, they're neighboring roads, Newcastle, Lincoln, where people walk their pets and children walk home from school. Unfortunately, with the current application method, the personnel distributing these hazardous chemicals are not able to warn people to stay away from the treated areas. Only after about two to four days does a foliage show signs that the application has been applied, when the foliage turns yellow and then starts to turn brown. According to the Rose Division, you have the option to post no-spray signs, however they're not always honored. Recently, a neighbor's house is sprayed right up to her fence line with herbicides despite her no-spray signs. Her dogs are outside all day, exposing them to the fresh chemicals. That same truck turned the corner and sprayed over the neighboring driveway. Andrea was in her car cleaning, her and her partner was on the porch, exposing both of them to the chemicals as well. Great care is not being exercised when distributing these chemicals, including spraying near waterways, as you can see by these photos. I've gone through various parts of Newcastle where we have the irrigation water dishes, which waters the farms and so forth nearby, and they get sprayed right over the spray lines, and I'll provide those to you. Also, of the fence line with the dogs right at the fence line where the spray line is, and the neighboring house with the driveway, and I'll provide those as well. To help with minimizing unnecessary exposure, posting signs stating when an area has been sprayed and with what chemicals on site, people can make conscious decisions to steer clear of those areas, particularly with their dogs and children, especially when dogs like to wander into the grasses and chew on them and so forth, when they've been freshly sprayed. I did talk to a couple in Lincoln. This is a walkway that both sides have been sprayed. They're walking their little Dotson dog. Luckily, when they were walking, when it was sprayed about a month ago, they saw that the truck was there, so they were able to avoid the spot, otherwise they wouldn't have been notified. I also have a petition of about 200 signatures from the community that supports labeling when they're gonna be spraying herbicides. That's all.
If you would maybe give some contact information to one of our people in the front office outside, Kevin Tabor with our Department of Public Works and Wes Nix with our Environmental Health are the two people at the county who are most knowledgeable and responsible for these applications in the county jurisdiction, not the cities. But I'm sure they'd be happy to have a follow-up meeting with you, and maybe you guys could have a dialogue, and maybe that could percolate back up to the board.
Yeah, I would definitely appreciate that. I've been in contact with Don Anderson, who's also the manager for Rose Division, and I've been talking about him about alternative options to use, rather than using the chemical sprays, which he's open to, which is really refreshing to hear. But as far as the signage and so forth, he didn't sound very positive about that. So it's definitely a dialogue I'd like to continue.
Well, if you leave your name and contact information with someone in the front office, we'll be happy to have one of those two people follow up.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Pleasure. Okay, we're now gonna move to our nine o'clock timed item, Health and Human Services, Jeff Brown, recognition, Placer County for receiving two California State Association of Counties 2015 Merit Awards. Jeff?
Good morning, Chair Weigant, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. This morning, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Farah McDade Ting, the legislative representative for CSAC for Health and Human Services. Farah has worked many years for CSAC promoting legislation to help strengthen health and safety net systems around the state, with particular support to our system here in Placer County. She's been a great friend. On a personal note, she's also a local product, having graduated from Placer High School, and she still calls Placer County her home. She's here with us this morning to share CSAC's recognition of and honor to of our trend-setting Health and Human Services programs. So I'd like to turn it over to Farah.
And again, I'm Farah McDade Ting. I have brought some hardware that I wanted to place very gently there because it's breakable. I am so pleased to be here this morning. Thank you for having CSAC and having us on the board agenda to speak to Chairman Weigant and members. I am a hometown product. I've lived in District Five and District Three, as well as visited and played in many of the other districts in Placer County. I do live in Sacramento now, so I am a flatlander, but this is where my heart lies. I did wanna mention, I know that this community, especially Auburn and Placer, is in a period of grieving for the two lives that were lost on Saturday afternoon. I want to send my condolences, not only to the board, but the members of this community. And I would also like to, on a somewhat lighter note, thank this board and this county. We, CSAC, we work in Sacramento, we have a small staff of about 30 people, and when people begin to work at CSAC, we stay for quite some time. I've been there for 15 years. And about two years ago, Jeff, very graciously, and you, the board, we poached Graham Canas from your Health and Human Services Agency here. He has been a delightful coworker and is doing a great job for all counties down in Sacramento, but his experience at Placer County has helped inform everything that we do. So I want to thank you for that. Now, moving on to the actual awards presentation, this is my favorite part of our job, is we have the CSAC Challenge Awards every year, and actually, the 2016 Challenge Awards entries, the delay, the deadline for entries will open at the end of June this year. So I know Placer County has won Merit Awards the last two years, so we can't wait to see what Placer County submits at the end of June this year. But this is for the 2015 Merit Awards. We have a panel of judges from throughout the state. We get more than 200 entries every year. This last year, we had almost 300. And that panel of judges, of course, looks at programs that are replicable, that other counties can learn from, innovative, that highlight collaboration in how counties do things, that make the best use of the limited resources that many counties have. And that is why Placer rose to the top for these two Merit Awards. The first is for a program, the Campaign for Community Wellness. That is a advisory group that is actually required by Proposition 63, the Mental Health Services Act. Each county is required to form a community group with, of course, county representatives, consumers, community stakeholders, and others. So each county does have one of these bodies, but what made Placer so unique is the intensive outreach efforts that their mental health, MHSA board did in reaching out to the community, and also the numbers. MHSA dollars, when MHSA was passed, the county was serving about 1,600 folks in the county with the MHSA dollars that that board has been able to work with the community to, to develop programs to reach three to five times that many people. So it was innovative, and really what our judges liked a lot was the collaborative nature and the way that the board and the board of supervisors did outreach to the community to solicit participation and comment during that process. That board meets every year to determine how to distribute MHSA dollars. So every year, the board has a new chance to see if there's a new need in the community, if there's another way that MHSA dollars can be spent, and so we look forward to the continued work of this board. But the Campaign for Community Wellness was a Merit Award winner. And secondly, the telephonic signature program in Placer County. I cannot emphasize how innovative this is for Placer County to have done this. There are 57 other counties who are watching you as you do it. What Placer County was able to do in the Health and Human Services Agency was develop a telephonic signature program for enrolling folks into Medi-Cal through the Affordable Care Act, because we had a huge influx of people who needed to enroll in Medi-Cal and suddenly qualified for Medi-Cal. The county developed a system, instead of mailing a paper packet to each applicant and having them sign it and mail it back, just the amount of staff time you can imagine for each application. They developed a telephonic signature program where we're able to get the consent of the person on the phone, complete the application process on the phone, and get that application into the state Medi-Cal database for eligibility. Very innovative. I know the county has plans to expand this program for the CalFresh and CalWorks program. That will be amazing. We look forward to seeing that Challenge Award entry soon as well. And on a side note, CSAC has advocated very strongly for counties to have enough Medi-Cal administration money to be able to implement programs like this post-ACA. We've got, it's just changed the landscape, it's changed the numbers of people coming in through the doors for Medi-Cal eligibility. So developing innovative programs like this that save the county staff time and save the person on the other end of the line time, as well as postage and all of that, is a great thing. And again, Placer County is a leader in the state on this. So I'd like to present these two Merit Awards to the county staff and Jeff's folks, and thank you.
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 Thank you. Welcome back to Placer County. Congratulations to Jeff and all of your staff. I, for a long time, fought highly of the Placer model of Health and Human Services and its innovative approach and the entrepreneurialism, and we take a lot of pride in that here in Placer County. I think it serves us well, and we consider it to be a work in progress. So with that, Jeff, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but we're all up here, five of us, looking forward to all what you're going to do in 2016 with the awards and making sure that you sustain. And I want to let you.
Well, I can assure you that we will be submitting more applications to be considered and to be honored. So we're wrapping that up right now. Actually, we're putting in some applications for NACO awards, and then we'll be turning our attention to the CSAC program here in the next month or so.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our 9:10 timed item is a commendation regarding Auburn Community Cancer Endowment Fund, and Supervisor Montgomery is going to present that.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Weigant. I'm going to let some folks trickle out here. What I'd like to do as well is ask, I'm not sure who's the representative today of ACCEF or if you all are, but please, please come forward, because I feel really silly talking to an empty podium there. Someone indulge me. Excellent. Yeah, I would have felt really silly talking to the empty podium, so thank you for coming forward. This is really my honor and my delight to be able to read this commendation and present it today. I did not know Virgil, who was really sort of a guiding light behind all of this, as you know, as well as many of you, but the Virgil that I was fortunate enough to know was just delightful, someone that I was always just happy to see, even when he was cranky with me, because he was right when he was cranky. But I think, I think most important for me was the fact that I was able to see him pretty much every Monday at Sizzler, where he would meet his gang for lunch. They're probably not a gang, they're a social club, I'm sure. But, you know, I always got a hug and a kiss and just a great update on what was going on, both with him personally and with ACCEF, and it was just a real honor for me to have known the guiding light behind this effort. So I'm going to put my glasses on, and I'm going to read this. "In the manner of a commendation recognizing Auburn Community Cancer Endowment Fund, ACCEF, for their dedication to funding cancer research. Whereas, in a coffee shop at a meeting called together by Dick Azvedo with attendees Merv Hall and Virgil Trainer, the discussion between friends was, 'What can we do about cancer?'" By the time they left the coffee shop that morning, they had all pledged $10,000 each, and the ACCEF was born. Norma Harris was quickly asked to join, and then there were four. And whereas in 2001, Virgil Trainer contacted Janine Stiles with the UC Davis Cancer Center and told her that Auburn wanted to do something to support cancer research, Virgil went to the cancer center and Janine introduced him to the director, Dr. Ralph Devere White. Virgil invited the pair to a barbecue at his home with about 20 other people. By the end of the evening, the group had raised another $100,000. And whereas in 2003, Jim and Sally Otto hosted the first Jim Otto Celebrity Golf Classic at the Auburn Valley Golf Course, which raised an additional $150,000 for the fund. By 2004, the group had raised half a million dollars. And whereas in the fall of 2004, Virgil set about creating a formal organization. At their first meeting, Bruce Dear nominated Bart O'Brien as the chairman, Norma Harris seconded the motion, and it was done. The Auburn Community Cancer Endowment Fund was formally established. Their purpose was supporting cancer research, and I emphasize "research," not treatment or hospitals, not doctors, but good old-fashioned research. And whereas Jackie Trainer, as co-host of the annual ACCEF barbecue, has been Virgil's partner in life and in fundraising, has been very important to the effort. And whereas in March of 2005, the ACCEF celebrated a milestone, raising $1 million for cancer research, but Virgil wanted more. He wanted to raise a million and a half dollars, which would secure them a chair at the UC Davis Cancer Center. In July 2006, Auburn became the first city in the USA and the world to have a university-endowed chair named for it. And whereas Dr. Ralph Devere White credits ACCEF and Barton Harmon with being the pivotal stimulus to the university's award-winning new facility in Sacramento, and whereas everyone has been touched in some way by this horrific disease, ACCEF continues the fight to raise money, which is channeled to UC Davis Medical Center, one of the nation's leading cancer research centers. And Bart, if I'm not wrong, you've raised $3 million to date?
$3 million, yeah.
$3 million to date. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors at the county of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, at a regular meeting held April 5, 2016, and recognizes the outstanding work of the ACCEF and all of its participants, many of whom are here today, but not all, in striving to end the devastating disease known as cancer. They have truly made a difference. This is signed by Chairman Weigant on behalf of all of us. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture, and then we can have some comments if we would. Do I have it right setup? One more, one for each of you. All right, can we have some comments from either or both of you?
Sure, Jackie loves to speak.
I know she does. Poor Jackie.
All I want to say is Virgil would be very happy, and thank you very much for all your support.
Anyone else?
Bart's a copper.
Yeah, I was a high school history teacher, so you know what that says. I'm not afraid to talk, and that's really the reason I'm here as chairman. Well, the real reason is I was a little bit late to that meeting back in 2004. And Bruce, who in those days was the assessor and was too busy to do this job himself, he knew the best defense was a good offense, so he nominated me as soon as I walked into the room, and I had no idea what was going on. And what he may not know is I'm forever thankful that that happened, because it's really cemented my relationship with Virgil Trainer. And my brother was Virgil's insurance agent, which is kind of a long, weird, complicated story, because my brother was from the Bay Area, but I'll just say, my brother took care of veterinarians. And so I knew of Virgil for my whole life. And Virgil was the kind of guy who my brother would say, my mom was living on Social Security up here in Placer County and didn't have any money, and my brother would say, "Well, you know, when our mom takes her cat to the vet, she thinks it costs $15," because that's what Virgil charges her. And so I think that was her big vet bills. And Virgil was just a great person in our family, so when I got to know Virgil, that was really wonderful. But what was really great was when he pulled me into the fold of the Auburn Community Cancer Endowment Fund. And I went along for the ride. I mean, when Virgil said to stand up and tell our story, I'd stand up and tell our story. When he said we need a meeting, I'd call a meeting. When he'd say we got to do this, I would do that. But Virgil was the drive, he was the heart behind the scene, but he told me a number of times, "I'm not going to talk. You get up there." And he was amazing. All the people that are here loved Virgil so much, and we wanted to do what would make him happy. And raising money for cancer research really made him happy. He had cancer, and so he knew about it. What many people don't know is people throughout this community, when they had cancer, when they got that diagnosis, they called Virgil. And Virgil met him at McDonald's or the yogurt shop or a coffee place, and he listened. And yet, with his cancer, I remember the last time he had a major treatment where he lost all his hair. I remember being in his car with him, driving somewhere, and he said, "You know, this could be all I talk about, so I won't talk about it at all." And we had, you know, we had a conversation not about it, because he didn't want to talk about it. He wanted to talk about all the other things, what's going on in your life. And it's remarkable. And, you know, Virgil was responsible for us doing the work that raised $3 million, but he was also responsible for about another $6 million being contributed to UC Davis. I mean, the Davis is now one of 42 national comprehensive cancer centers in the United States. It is big time, and it became big time because of Auburn. It's so important to recognize that, that Virgil and Dick and Norma Harris and these wonderful people, they had this idea that we can raise money, we can make a difference in the fight against cancer. And now they've hired this guy with our, with this money, this guy, Dr. McPherson, and he's off the charts. He's had six cover pictures or stories on Nature Magazine, which, you know, you may not get it, but it's like one of the definitive scientific journals. This guy is the real deal. He talks about stuff that, you know, we don't know what he's talking about, but they're really working towards a cure of cancer. So I thank all the people in this room. I thank the people, everyone from, you know, people that gave us a check for five bucks to people that gave a check for $100,000. It's been an amazing, amazing experience, truly one of the great things in my life, great chapters to be a part of this. So thank you, Jennifer, for acknowledging this. Thank you for, you don't have to remind me how much I love Virgil, what he meant to me, but it's always nice to have the chance to recognize this. And Jackie's been just amazing, and her legs recovering, and pretty soon she's going to toss the cane and be dancing down these aisles. So thank you all, thanks to the group. It's been just a tremendous experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart and Jackie, and thank you all that have participated in this tremendous feat for Virgil. Virgil and I go way back. Actually, my sister began working with him when he first started out, and I've known him all my life. And his dedication to this was unbelievable. But I have to say on a personal note, through Virgil's friendship, his encouragement and his support of me, I probably wouldn't be sitting here today if it hadn't been for Virgil Trainer. So I just wanted to thank you all, and thank you, Jackie, for.
And that's why I showed up at the barbecues to help us, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure Virgil is very proud at this moment, so thank you. And our 9:15 item is an appropriate follow-up, also presented by Supervisor Montgomery regarding proclaiming Placer, or excuse me, May 3, 2016, as our big day of giving in Placer County.
Absolutely. And bye, thank you all for coming. This next proclamation is really kind of a heads up for everyone and to remind you that here in Placer County, we focus on giving every day, but we laser-focus on giving one day a year. And that day is May 3, 2016. So I'm going to start by reading the proclamation and then make just a couple of comments. "In the manner of a proclamation recognizing May 3, 2016, as the big day of giving, otherwise known as the big dog," so if you hear "big dog," that's what that stands for, "in Placer County. Whereas on May 3, 2016, cities across the United States are participating in a Give Local America event in which community foundations encourage charitable giving in their communities. And whereas Placer Community Foundation, a trusted resource for contributing to local organizations, will host the big day of giving on May 3, 2016, in partnership with regional community foundations. And whereas close to 600 nonprofits throughout the region will participate in the big day of giving, 99 of which are located in Placer County and serve its residents. And whereas contributions made on the big day of giving will be amplified with incentives and prize dollars, allowing each donation to go further and empowering our nonprofits to offer more of their services to the community. And whereas the big day of giving is an opportunity for Placer County residents to show their community pride through supporting the good work of our local nonprofits. And whereas philanthropic investment helps hardworking nonprofits make an impact on the causes that affect us all and provides donors with a sense of ownership of their community. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, at a regular meeting held April 5, 2016, proclaiming May 3, 2016, as the big day of giving, and encouraging all citizens to support the work of local nonprofit organizations who help our county thrive. Signed by Chairman Weigant on behalf of all of us." So quick round of applause there, and then a few additional comments. And Jim, come forward. Sorry, I didn't realize that you are going to be formally receiving this.
Well.
A couple of very quick comments that I want to add. So here in the Auburn area, we're actually going to have a specific event at the State Theater where you can go, if you don't want to give online, you can donate live and in person, you can talk with the various nonprofits here in Placer County. They will have representatives there, refreshments, music, it'll be lots of fun, so it'll be like a party, not just an opportunity to donate. And then I also want to give a shout-out to the Ripple Effect, who are participating with the Placer Community Foundation Outreach Committee. Kindra Armalong here is part of that group. Kindra, I hope you don't mind me calling you out personally. But the Ripple Effects, I want to talk about them a little bit. They're a group of young professionals in Placer County who are really trying to make an impact on our community throughout Placer County, not just here in the Auburn area, but throughout Placer County. And they're focusing on both social engagement and community service, and this is a terrific opportunity for all of us to support both of those pieces and the Ripple Effect and the Placer Community Foundation. So Jim, take it away.
I think I'll just throw these away, because I think you discovered everything that was in there, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's perfect. First of all, I serve on the board of Placer Community Foundation, and we really sincerely want to thank the board for proclaiming May 3, the big day of giving in Placer County. As you know, Placer Community Foundation is dedicated to growing philanthropy in our county, and so we're thrilled to have this event. We have, I think it's nearly 100 nonprofits that are participating. It's about 20% of the groups region-wide that will be participating in the event. And we have raised, the community foundation has raised prize money to offer incentives, and so as you get your emails, sometimes there's, like, there's, I know there's one that starts at midnight of that day, and if you're one of the early contributors, some of the organizations can win a prize. All gifts go directly to the nonprofit from the website at bigdayofgiving.org. You mentioned the event, the kickoff event that will be happening in Auburn. We will also have a kickoff event at Westfield Galleria at Roseville on May 3, between 10 a.m. and 1 p.m., where attendees can learn about the nonprofits and the services they provide the community. And there will also be entertainment there and a giving station for people to donate. The thing that we're really proud of is last year's big day of giving raised $850,000 for nonprofits in Placer County and brought awareness and visibility to our local nonprofits. The nonprofits in Placer County are addressing a variety of causes that are deeply important to individuals and families in our community, including arts, education, senior issues, open space, health and human services, and animal welfare. Chances are excellent that something that you care about will be participating in the big day of giving. I think we also have some of the other nonprofits represented here today in addition to the other support that we're getting. Our nonprofits are deserving of our support, and we sincerely appreciate your help in encouraging people to give where their heart is on May 3. Thanks.
All right, go anywhere.
I think we got, I think we got a whole cadre that can come up.
Yeah, why don't all the nonprofit representatives come on up for a big photograph?
And I'm now officially wearing my symphony hat. And I, I'm now officially wearing my symphony hat. Come on forward, all the big day of giving. Come, please in.
I know my place, I'm in.
Oh. Anyone else want to make any comments? No? Veronica.
The one thing I'd just add that was really amazing about big day of giving the last couple of years is 30% of the people who gave on big day of giving were first-time givers to those organizations, and that is significant, as they enter into philanthropic giving towards those organizations, they can grow from there. So thanks so much for your support.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for your work, great work in community, you know. I'll see you tomorrow, Jim. Our 9:30 timed item is next, and it is a proclamation declaring April 4 through the 10th of 2016 as Public Health Week. So I will grab the commendation, and if you'd let me read it, then I'll bring it down to Whereas the week of April 4 through the 10th is National Public Health Week, and the theme is the Healthiest Nation 2030. Whereas the Institute of Medicine defines public health as, "What we as a society do collectively to assure the conditions in which people can be healthy." Whereas Placer County consistently ranks as one of the healthiest counties in California in the annual Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's County Health Rankings. Whereas Placer County's high achievement in these rankings is a testimony not just to the success of our public health system, but to the strength of our local economy, businesses, governments, schools, parks, and community organizations. Whereas ultimately, Placer County's health is a result of Placer County residents, families, communities making healthy choices for themselves and the people they love. And whereas as a healthy Placer County is strategically connected to the overall strength of our county and its future. Whereas Placer County has recently launched Be Well Placer, a campaign to further improve the health and wellness of Placer County community. Whereas walking is a low-risk and easy way for us to stay fit and reduce our risk of serious disease like heart disease, stroke, diabetes, increase our energy and stamina, increase our bone strength, and prevent weight gain. Whereas throughout the month of April, and especially during the week of April 4 through the 10th, Placer County Public Health Division and local partners are raising awareness of public health's importance, making public health programs and messages more visible to our residents. Whereas Placer County, our, Placer County residents are encouraged to educate themselves on ways to improve their own health and the health of the community, therefore be proclaimed, et cetera. But, thank you, Rock.
Thank you, Chairman Weigand, members of the board. You, you pretty much said it all with that proclamation, but I, I just want to recognize that public health is not just about the Public Health Division, or the Department of Health and Human Services, although we have some amazing dedicated staff, but really it's a team effort. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight kind of one example of that team effort. You know, you mentioned in the proclamation, our Be Well Placer campaign, which has started off being targeted towards our Placer County employees. We decided to, you know, heal ourselves first, and to offer, in, in 2014, a lot of different wellness activities for our Placer County employees, including walking challenges, and messaging, and opportunities to have, you know, a more healthy diet. And so in recognition of some of the efforts really in the last couple of years, led by, so up, up front here, Joe Arsenath, who's our program manager in public health, and Lori Woods, who, in, in HR, they really partnered together between HHS and HR, with Jeff Brown and Lori Walsh, also providing lots of leadership, to roll this out really with, with no budget. And we got a recognition through the American Heart Association earlier this year, a gold achievement award, in recognition of, of really this program and our efforts to make Placer County a fit-friendly employer. But we're not stopping there, so what we wanted to recognize today is our latest walking challenge, which is really a new wrinkle, and we're really trying to move in this direction, of having Be Well Placer not just be for Placer County employees, but to be, you know, targeting employees, employee health throughout the county, but just all residents of Placer County. So this latest walking challenge was a partnership with, you could call it a partnership or a competition, it was a fun competition between Placer County and Placer County Office of Education, and we had, again, from Lori and Joe, amazing support, but also Kendra, who was here for the day of giving, but is, is also here as a representative from PCOE, who really helped us a, a lot in organizing this walking challenge. So the walking challenge, I have some statistics here, if we can advance, we have a slide here. But we had 55 teams from Placer County with over 340 participants, and from Placer County Office of Education, 12 teams with over 50 participants. Millions of steps as part of this walking challenge, and we had some really great team names, so just to highlight some of our team names, we had Boom Shakalaka, Luke Sidewalkers, Walktoberfest, and Ledgers and Leggings. And so it was, it was just a lot of fun, it was an opportunity, especially in this area, a lot of cross-pollination between PCOE and Placer County, but it's really something that we want to do a lot more of in the future, of partnering with other, I talked to some people from Sutter and Kaiser, of other ma, large employers, but even small employers. So wanted to take this opportunity to recognize, at least our first, we had lots of winners, in fact, everyone, I guess, was a winner, if you got out and were walking and enjoying really the, the beautiful weather, and also taking steps to, to better health. But the, the, the big winners, we had, we actually divided up, we had large teams and small teams, so maybe I'll have Kendra come up and present to the, the winner for our small team, from, was from PCOE.
Okay. Thank you. So we were so honored to be a part of this, and here with me today, I have from the Placer Pacers, Janet Larson and Darcy Runspee, if you guys want to come down. And Frank Faulkner could not be here, but he was the third member of that team, so, I'll give you these later, this is... Thank you.
And next, so from, actually, this was not rigged, but from Placer County, within HHS, we had the, our first place in the large teams was our Enterprise Trekkies, and I think we have some people from the Trekkies involved, including Twila Abrahamson. So come on up, Twila, and maybe I'll let you, yeah, further, you can, you're gonna give the awards, the rest of your, your fabulous team.
Happy to do so. I do want to say one thing, our fearless leader, Diane Cotto, is not here today, but she did want to express her interest and, and her gratitude for all of it, and we wouldn't have gotten, and, this far if we hadn't had her leadership. So thank you to Diane. And we also have Christina, as office. Christina, if you want to come down. I shouldn't have done that in order, sorry, you guys. I'm looking at these little cards. And let's find her, Christina. We'll try to do this. Andrew, you can get out easily, Andrew Scott. Karen Anne. And we also have Christine Colster. And we are also missing one other person, who is Kami Burke, and she's, believe it or not, can do all of this ri, uh, walking, and is out getting her hip replaced. So, amazing. So thank you to everyone. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Shrink in. Yeah. Tennis shoes.
Thank you.
So in closing, I just wanted to highlight, so tomorrow will be the American Heart, Heart Association's National Walking Day, so we're really encouraging everyone tomorrow to get out and enjoy the beautiful weather, it's gonna be a hot one tomorrow, so, but to get out and walk, and we're actually having an open house on Thursday morning for, at pub, over at Public Health, at, at the government center, and so we welcome everyone to come in and check out some of the great things that we're doing in public health. And with that, we're just asking for the board's support of these efforts through the declaration of April 4 through 10th as Public Health Week, and April 6 as Walking Day in Placer County. Thank you.
Stay down there, Mal. Present this tear up. And I think it's Boom Shakalaka, but I think that might be a 60's thing.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, we'll now go to our 9:45 timed item, where did Brett know, there it is. Tony, come forward, I'd say, update on our Placer County water supply.
Yeah, good morning, honorable members of the board, and thank you for having me here today. I did, oh, thank you, I had a PowerPoint as part of my presentation, and thank you for it showing up here. The, this should be a brief presentation, the conclusion of it is that we have adequate water supplies for 2016, and as a result of that, PCWA has taken actions to rescind its declaration of emergency. That happened in February. As we all know, there's emergency regulations throughout the state of California that are coming down from the state water board. And so in, in recognition of declaring our emergency over, we had to sort of contend with that, and so I'll be talking a little bit about how we are working through that as well. So that, that summarizes my presentation. So first, just a little bit of background on how we got here, as far as our drought emergency. We declared the emergency on February 6, 2014, it was Resolution 1402, and, and that declaration of emergency, again, that was PCWA's local declaration, and it was at a time when our water supply forecast was at its grimmest, working with PG&E, and as you know, we have two water supplies, we have our PG&E supply and our American River supply. Our PG&E supply at that time was forecast to be as low as a 40% allocation, so that's not a 40% cut, that was a 40% allocation back in February 2014. And we had reasons why we wanted to declare the emergency, but we also knew there was a lot of spring ahead of us, and things could change quite a bit. So what we did was, we, we declared the emergency, but we held back our implementation of our water shortage contingency plan, waiting on further information. And, and as you can see there, PG&E had, throughout that spring and into the summer, that allocation had increased from 40% to, by the time we got to early summer, it was 70% allocation. By the time we got into April of 2014, we had had a good grasp on what we were going to need in terms of expectations from our customers, and we implemented through another resolution, our water shortage contingency plan, and that would be the first in a series of four, as I'd indicated here, we had four resolutions implementing our water shortage contingency plan, and, and that one was looking for 10% to 20% conservation from our customers. And, and what we really needed when we did all the bookkeeping on our water supplies, and with some conservative estimates, was only about 10% conservation. Now, as everyone is well aware, we, we ended up being regulated to exceed that amount quite a bit. In fact, this last year, we were expected to conserve 32%. Our customers really rose to the occasion and did a fine job, and, and well exceeded our expectations as well. And, and the results, in 2014, our customers had conserved 24%, or up to that amount, and the summer of 2015, they had conserved up to 38%. So they did quite fabulously. It's important to note, and what we've come to realize, our customers' willingness to conserve i, is strongly based on what they observe out in their environment that they witness. And so their conservation is, is gonna be the result of what they see at Folsom Lake, what they see in snowpack, what they see when they're sending their kids to school in the morning, is, are they needing an umbrella or not, you know? And so for them, it's, it's a little bit more real. And this winter has shown a good bit of production, as far as rainfall and snowpack, and our customers are well aware of that. There's also been quite a bit learned by PCWA operations and working with PG&E, we've, we've learned a lot over this last two years of drought, and it, in that sense, it's been good for us. We've really learned how hard we can push the system. So now I'm gonna fast-forward where we are now, and in terms of our water supply situation, and why we felt we could rescind our declaration of emergency. So I'm just gonna go through these relatively quickly, but this is a monthly distribution of rainfall this winter that we just experienced, and you can see, for instance, March was 200% of normal, so it was quite good. February was our only non-productive month, but the, the other months were much more productive, and certainly gave us what we needed. And then this is the same information, but in a cumulative form, and you can see that we're at 112% of normal precipitation right now. And, and let's just compare that, so, so we're at, if we weren't to get another drop of rain, we're, we're essentially at average at this point, so we have, we have plenty of water, just even to date. And if you compare that to where we were in 2015, and, and then also, I'd just like to make reference to back to 1977, so you see, 2015 was not that bad as far as precipitation, and that's what I'd like you to take note of, and compare that to 1977, which is considered the worst year on record. But why did, you know, in, in fact, when you look at this chart, you'd wonder, for Northern California, if we're just that much below normal, why is that enough, not enough back in 2015 to have full supplies? Well, it had to do with lack of snowpack, and I'll show that in the next slide. But as far as where we are today, we're above average and looking good. This is snowpack, and this is real-time snow sensors up in the mountains that we use, it's, it's for a broad area of Northern California, it's eight stations, and it's an average of those stations. And you can see that as far as snowpack this year, we're hovering right about average, so that's quite good. We did just get our April 1 snow surveys in that are more specific to our two water supplies, and our, the results of our snow survey for our Middle Forks supply was 74%, and the April 1 snow survey for our PG&E supply was 84%. So a little bit less than what you see on these snow sensors out in the mountains, these real-time sensors, but still plenty adequate for full supplies. The reason I draw attention to 2015 last year on the precipitation slide, is if you look at 2015 as far as snowpack last year, the snowpack was down at 1977 levels, and perhaps even a little bit worse than 1977. So that was really the wild card that kept us from getting full supplies from PG&E last year. And so it's just important to understand that, and that's part of where we learned certain metrics throughout this period, as far as snowpack, rainfall, and reservoir storage, and how those affect what we can expect from PG&E and from our Middle Fork Project. So, in, in that sense, there has been quite a few lessons learned. As far as storage, our Middle Fork Project is comfortably above average, or above normal, it's at 115%, which is quite refreshing to see that, given the fact that over the last three years, we have had several exports out of county, for out-of-county water sales and for environmental releases. And, and we, we've released about 70, 72,000 acre-feet, I believe is the number. And so even in retrospect of having made those releases for environment and out-of-county needs, we still are comfortably above average at this point, and so it just shows how, how resilient that water supply system is. And then our PG&E system, you can see it's over double average right now as far as storage, so it's looking quite good. And then Folsom Reservoir, just, even though we don't personally take water out of Folsom, there are several water agencies in, two in Placer County that do take their water out of Folsom, and you can see that it's been in the news, Folsom has been spilling, they were encroaching in the flood pool, and Folsom is quite good. They're at 72% of capacity, or 115% of average, so Folsom is, is looking quite good. This, this photo was taken about a week ago. So all this should draw us to the conclusion, and we've made the determination, yes, we will have full water supplies for this year, and so that did lead to us rescinding our declaration of emergency. And that decision came by work with our legal counsel, they had advised us that our authority to declare an emergency comes through our PCWA Act, and the PCWA Act also provides the responsibility that when you're in a declared emergency, the, the rules are written to where you're supposed to get out of that emergency as soon as you can. And I'm certain those rules are there, so that you don't try to take advantage of or game the system, right? That you owe it to the public, that if the emergency conditions aren't there, you're supposed to declare it over. And so we felt legally responsible to declare our emergency over. And so we presented Resolution 1606 to our Board of Directors on February 18. And so we presented Resolution 1606 to our Board of Directors on February 18. It acknowledged all of the great efforts of our customers over the last few years, it thanked them, and it also acknowledged that throughout this drought, that we did send these releases to the downstream environment and to out-of-county water needs, because we had the resource there and we were able to do it. And then ultimately, that, that resolution essentially declared the emergency over, and it also rescinded all of the, I had mentioned, there were four resolutions that were used to implement stages of our water shortage contingency plan, and it rescinded all of those implementations of that plan. So basically, we were starting with a clean slate at this point, and that would have been the end of the story, except we do have these statewide regulations to contend with. And so, not having the authority of a declared emergency under our belts, we had to come up with a new authority to basically acknowledge that we were going to try to still seek conservation for the purpose of complying with the State Water Board. And that brings us to another resolution. So on the same board agenda, on February 18, we had two items, one in front of the other, we declared the drought over, and then we had a resolution to acknowledge what we were having to do as far as the State Water Board goes. This resolution acknowledged the executive orders of the Governor, it acknowledged the emergency regulations that resulted from that, and coming from the State Water Board, and it also acknowledged the fact that we were no longer under our own emergency, so we needed some different authority. One of the major points of this resolution was, we tried to draw a distinction between conservation and water use efficiency. If you think about it, we can only implement a stage of our water shortage plan if we're under an emergency, and that's how the rules are written there, and we can only mandate conservation if we, if we need that, that reduction, that rationing, if you will. And so what I'd like to say is that, you know, conservation can be a murky term, as to whether it means, is it just, you know, you know, moral use of water, or is there really a need for me to conserve? And so I'd like to actually use different terms, and I'd say rationing is something you do in a time of need, and water use efficiency is something you do for the good of the order. And this resolution tried to make that distinction, and really what we're looking for from our customers is water use efficiency in an effort to comply with the State Water Board. And so even though we're not seeking that efficiency under the authority of a declared emergency, we are taking actions, we have our water efficiency team out, marketing, working with people on various fronts, to try to seek as much efficiency as we can, and we're doing our best for the good of the order, if you will. This resolution doesn't have the same obligation to approach our board at every meeting, we were having to do that over the last two years, and tell them the status of our emergency conditions, and, and so we're not having to do that now. What it does obligate staff to do is, is report to the board on any matters that materially affect PCWA or its customers, and I would expect the first opportunity for that to come up would be following a State Water Board workshop that's being held on April 20. And the other thing that this resolution acknowledged, when the State Water Board last passed their emergency regulations on February 2, they put in there a, an opportunity to acknowledge local water supplies, and it actually came down to a deliberation at the end of the, that hearing on February 2, between the Water Board's Chair, Marcus, and State Staff, where they were talking about, how do we recognize local conditions? And State Staff was somewhat wanting to resist, but Chair Marcus had actually said, "Well, I think we need to recognize, maybe not everybody is in a drought, and we see that as an opportunity." So as you well know, letters have been written, many sort of political fronts have been pursued to try to seek relief from having to conserve when we have, in light of the fact that we have full supplies, so. We will be approaching the Water Board on April 20, and perhaps following up with our own board on what the results of that were. And with that, I just, that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Tony. Questions for the board? I don't see any. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? I see none either.
Oh, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to our 10 o'clock timed item, which is Community Development Resource Agency renaming the road Windflower Place to Commercial Place. Rick.
Yes, good morning, Chair Wygant and Board members, I'm Rick Eary with the Community Development Resource Agency, and I do have with me some staff, in the event you have questions that are too difficult for me to answer, they're here in the audience. The item that we have before you today is request to rename a road in Sheridan from Windflower Place to Commercial Place. As you can see here on our vicinity map, Windflower Place is located just south of where Rioce Road intersects with Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard, it's shown in red. As a bit of background, the construction of the 2010 Highway 65 bypass project bifurcated Rioce Road, let's see if this thing, also, right here in this location, creating a smaller segment of roadway now known as Town View Court, and it also bifurcated North Dow Road in this location, creating this smaller segment of roadway now known as Windflower Place. Prior to the Highway 65 bypass project, North Dow and Rioce Road intersected where Town View Court and Windflower Place intersect today. Fast-forward to 2015, we received a request to rename Town, excuse me, Windflower Place to Commercial Place, due to the types of businesses and land uses in the area. The proposal was shared with the Sheridan MAC, and the MAC voted unanimously in favor, in support of the road name change. Late last year, staff balloted the affected property owners and received the required 2/3 majority vote supporting the road name change, and in February of this year, our Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor recommending your board approve the road name change from Windflower Place to Commercial Place. So with that, staff would recommend that your board approve the road name change from Windflower Place to Commercial Place, make a finding of exemption pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Sections 15061B3, and adopt the resolution authorizing the Deputy Director of Engineering and Surveying to assign the road name Commercial Place, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Rick. Jack.
Yes, is there a cost to the county to take all these actions?
It's just staff costs and the cost of a road name change sign, or the new signs.
Do we have a rough estimate of what it costs?
It's probably roughly $1,000 to $1,500 for staff time to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there, are there any questions from the public? See none, what is the pleasure? Lee.
Lee Bastian, Sheridan MAC, and I just want to ask the board to approve this, and also for Jennifer, the Placer County 4-H is participating in the big day of giving.
Attaboy, Lee.
Put in that plug.
That is their motion. Motion Home Second, Duran, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to go ahead and jump to the Sunset Industrial Area Department items, if I can, so that'll set back the other two remaining timed items a little bit, but, so we're going to, under Community Development Resources, we're going to hear a status update of the Sunset Industrial Plan, followed by Board Policy Question regarding Placer Ranch's specific plan. Michael, or Sherry, or someone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. As the Chair just stated, this is a two-part presentation. The first part of the presentation is an update on the Sunset area plan, and that will be made by Sherry Conway.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Sherry Conway, Planning Services Division. Since I was here last, providing your board with an update to the Sunset area plan in November, staff continues to make progress on the Sunset area plan update, and presented today for the board's information is a summary of the Opportunities and Constraints Report, of which I hope you all have a copy, and the preliminary land use designations. Oops, no. It's the wrong one. My apologies. I'll go on. Three documents of the Sunset area plan are now complete. These include the Existing Conditions Report, the Economic Market Analysis, and the Opportunities and Constraints Report. The consulting team and staff are currently working on the Land Use Alternatives Analysis, which I expect to have in hand this week, and we will be bringing that product to your board for input and consideration in the upcoming weeks. Following completion of the draft plan, I expect the Capital Improvement Plan and the Design Standards to come forward during the fall, with the CEQA analysis to follow during the fall and winter of this year. As mentioned, staff and the consulting team are currently evaluating land use alternatives, presently shown as a conceptual land use districting map. Dividing the Sunset area into several self-defined districts will allow for the development of distinctive and unique uses, design standards, and identities. As you can see, the proposed entertainment and commercial district could support various commercial uses, including retail, restaurants, lodging, indoor and outdoor recreation, and overall be compatible with the Thunder Valley Resort Casino. In-filled flex district along the eastern quadrant, which would support a continuation of light industrial flex uses in the area of existing development along Cincinnati and industrial avenues. A landfill eco-park is a concept to encourage environmentally sustainable waste management practice organizations. An innovation park out to the western part of the Sunset area, which would foster a mix of industry clusters in all stages of life cycles, an inclusion of walkable amenities such as retail and restaurants, a corporate campus reserve to encourage startups growing businesses and large corporate campuses due to the large tracts of land in the western part, and then, of course, the Placer Ranch specific plan area. With each of these district concepts, staff and the consulting team are evaluating implications in terms of land use, infrastructure and service demands, circulation and transportation, conservation and environmental resources, as well as the financial performance of these different land use types. The recently completed public draft of the Opportunities and Constraints Report is a tool designed to focus attention on key issues that have major policy implication as your board considers how the Sunset area should develop into the future. And while we often refer to the Sunset area as a region of greater than 8,000 acres, our analysis thus far actually indicates that the developable acreage is about one-half of that, or 4,591 acres. The Opportunities and Constraints Report is further broken down into four main categories, assets, issues, opportunities, and constraints. Constraints can describe major factors that should be considered where planning for development. An example of a significant constraint in the Sunset area, of course, are physical constraints, such as streams, wetlands, and flood hazards. An issue is an important unsettled matter, or problem that needs to be addressed through the planning process. An example, of course, of an issue would be the overall lack of backbone infrastructure available to serve the needs of businesses in the Sunset area. As depicted on this map, infrastructure is vastly limited to the eastern quadrant only. And so you see, combining the issues and constraints yields a composite constraints map visually depicting areas of the Sunset that are more and less favorable for future growth and development. While issues and constraints are evident, I do want to emphasize that the Sunset area also has plenty of assets. An asset is a valued characteristic that can be preserved or enhanced in the Sunset area. These include large tracts of developed land, six highly engaged and motivated landowners, proximity to communities with a very high quality of life, catalyst projects including Placer Parkway and Thunder Valley Casino Resort. Likewise, an opportunity is a unique, whoops, and favorable condition. I've lost my, I think that was the end of my presentation. Opportunities within the Sunset include major opportunities to expand the job base, a Placer Parkway, which will continue to provide an alternative east-west corridor, flex space in the Sunset area that equates to approximately one-quarter of the overall industrial space in the South Placer market. And then one final opportunity that we're going to hear more about today from my colleague is that of Placer Ranch. Of course, the Placer Ranch specific plan area resides to the southern portion of the Sunset area, accounting for about 1/3 of the overall acreage. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Michelle Kingsbury, and I'm happy to answer any questions that your board may have of me.
Thanks, Sherry. I don't see any questions at this time, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Sherry. Again, Michelle Kingsbury with the Community Development Resource Agency. As Sherry mentioned, the item before you today is really to look at an opportunity with the Placer Ranch specific plan. What we're seeking from the board today is your direction of whether or not the county to include Placer Ranch specific plan, and for the county to take the lead in the processing from a planning and environmental perspective with this specific plan development. As you're aware, Placer Ranch is proposed approximately 2,200 acres in the southern portion of the Sunset and area plan boundaries, it's directly adjacent to the city of Roseville, and it contemplates over 5,500 residential units, as well as about 7 million square feet of proposed land uses for both regional, commercial, and neighborhood commercial types of uses. And most importantly, it proposes a 300-acre site set aside for a satellite campus of the Sacramento State University system. I mean, it's with that catalyst project that we're looking to recommend the inclusion of this project within the Sunset and industrial area boundaries, and also for the county to take a lead in that processing. It represents several opportunities that staff sees from both an investment, a continued investment in our higher education, we call it cluster or hub, that's emerging in Placer County with both regional university specific plan and the Warwick University Partners, as well as Sierra College, and with the addition of, or, excuse me, with William Jessup University and the city of Rockland, and the addition of this proposed satellite campus of Sacramento State, it really is solidifying kind of this area for Northern California as a hub for higher educational uses. In addition, there's the economic investment, there are several studies that have been done, which illustrate the economic impacts of universities in the area from both, you know, an isolated kind of local jurisdiction and regional impact. In particular, I think Dr. Sanjay Varshney did one recently for the proposed satellite campus, which really illustrated that it's not only just a local, but regional asset that can be achieved. And lastly, from an infrastructure opportunity, Placer Ranch can be a catalyst, more or less, for infrastructure investment to support the Sunset Industrial Area Plan, and really bring that backbone infrastructure across Highway 65 into the Sunset area, and as we've often heard with Sunset, that the lack of infrastructure can be, and has been known to be, quite an impediment to development out there, and we see this project really as catalyzing it and jump-starting with this investment. With any opportunity, there are costs. Noted within the staff report are some kind of, and I would preface, very rough figures, as we're continuing to look at the technical studies that have been completed to date for Placer Ranch, and get an idea in our arms around how much it will cost for the county to take on this endeavor, we've got some rough estimates in the staff report, but we're continuing to refine those, and based upon your board direction, we would come back with more comprehensive budget figures, but certainly leveraging off the studies that have already been done, there's a significant amount of backbone and background data that has been done, that does not need to be repeated, and it provides for an opportunity to really jump-start and dive into this project and get it moving quickly. With the Cost Recovery Plan, as noted in the staff report, we would really be looking at, based upon your board direction today, developing a specific plan fee, and ultimately imposing that on development as it proceeds forward out there. This is a long-term investment, as specific plans take, you know, over a 20-year planning horizon to develop out, and so we'd be looking at over that timeframe to recoup costs for this type of investment. Based upon your direction today, staff would return on May 3 with a more comprehensive budget, as we're continuing to dive into these technical studies and working with the engineers that were on the project, to refine and put our arms around how much this would cost, as well as contract documents to get going and get started with our engineers and diving into these studies, updating where necessary, and beginning to finalize in the draft specific plan document that has been prepared with the prior development application. In addition, this really, I think, jump-start both from our Infrastructure Finance District and answering questions about from revenue models with Placer Ranch, whether it's in and out, in and out, we can really dive into that and bring forward those implementing documents for that, as well as looking at wastewater flows and where shed breaks can go, and feasibility analysis, we'd be looking at coming back with a multitude of different kind of investment opportunities and analysis of really how to move Sunset forward. and analysis of really how to move Sunset forward based upon your direction today. And with that, I know I spoke quickly, but we'll conclude this presentation. We're certainly available to answer any questions that you may have.
Jack?
Thank you very much for bringing both items forward. You know, this Sunset industrial area and the Plaza Ranch project are, it's kind of like a story of the little engine that could. And we all know, and I know in the last iteration, we learned quite a bit. I know myself and Supervisor Wiegand spent a lot of time with the prior developer on trying to figure out strategies to move the project forward. As a result of that, I gained a lot of knowledge on how important the Sunset industrial area is to the community, as well as having been a product of higher education, how important education is to the region as well. And unfortunately, you know, in the last iteration, things didn't really go as planned, and unfortunately also, there were a lot of people in the community that wanted to point the finger and say that, you know, that it was somebody's fault, or they just couldn't handle the fact that things sometimes don't work out. And that really kind of showed me how ignorant folks were with regards to how complex this type of a project is. But the one thing that I can always come back to is how, when everybody else was crying that the sky was falling and pointing fingers, that our staff had the resiliency to be able to come together and continue to try to get over the hurdles and make this thing work. I know that there have been a lot of meetings with our county CEO, Michael Johnson, I know that our treasurer tax collector, Janine Windishhausen, myself, and Supervisor Wiegand have been, you know, putting our nose to the grindstone in trying to make this work. And I'm just very thrilled at the possibility of, once again, Plaza County being underestimated and being in a position to overproduce. So, you know, I support both of these items coming forward with the caveat that it is going to, like Supervisor Wiegand had said before, is going to take a lot of collaboration and cooperation with the surrounding jurisdictions to create a project with an environment that really fits all of our interests. And I just received a letter from, and it's the first letter that I've ever seen, Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln on a letterhead saying that they're, you know, prepared to walk with us through this, which, you know, I'm thrilled that this could actually not even provide the opportunity for us to build our infrastructure and our economic engine for years to come in the region, but at the same time, be able to bring together these jurisdictions that provide so many great services to the region. So I'm excited about it. I know that there's going to be a lot of pitfalls. You know, I'm interested in working with all these other jurisdictions to make it work. But most of all, I want to thank staff for putting their nose to the grindstone and continuing to try to be problem solvers as opposed to throwing roadblocks in front of this project. So, thank you.
Jennifer?
I really also want to take the opportunity to thank staff both for the work on the SIA, but also on Plaza Ranch. I think that the idea about processing these two sort of in sync makes a great deal of sense, both from just a process standpoint, but also from Plaza County's commitment to higher education and to economic development. And I think that this should really send a strong message to, you know, some of our other higher education partners in the area that we are really there for you, and we're going to continue to be there for you moving forward, because we do see ourselves as a very innovative county with a perspective that west Plaza, or south Plaza, or however you think of it geographically, is the place that we are going to look at and incentivize both development and conservation. And the thing for me about rolling these two pieces together is that they are consistent with the PCCP. And that was very important to me, that we did not do anything that was inconsistent with the great work that Supervisor Wiegand and, excuse me, Chairman Wiegand and Supervisor Yuler have done over the past 15 years. And so I'm very heartened by the idea that we bring Plaza Ranch forward as part of the vision of the SIA. I think it absolutely makes sense, rather than to take a piecemeal approach and say, okay, here's the SIA and here's Plaza Ranch, but oh, wait, they're part and parcel of the same property. And as Supervisor Duran pointed out, I'm absolutely delighted to see the letter of support from the cities of Roseville, Lincoln, and Rockland. I think that shows the commitment that we all have here in Plaza County, whether we're county agencies or city jurisdictions, to make this a really exciting and terrific place to be, whether it's for UC, University or College, or whether it's for Warwick moving forward. But I'm very excited, and thank you all for your hard work, and I know there's a lot more to come, but thank you.
See no other questions except I'll throw in a couple of thoughts at this point. Keep in mind, we're going to open it up to the public, and in particular, want to hear from representative from the property owner on the Plaza Ranch issue. But, so want to thank staff for all the work that has gone into this, particularly sort of the greater collaborative county staff, if you will, that include different disciplines and compartments and departments, including Janine Windishhausen with the Treasury. But I really like the out-of-the-box components that we're looking at, so that different alternatives relates to financing, and I'm very willing to have a conversation and provide direction that, you know, normally in our county, we allow that the developer can take forward a project and a process and pay for all of that, and hopefully they'll be able to make their profit, and if it's consistent with our standards and our vision of what the community ought to look like in the future, we're okay with it, and we will position ourselves to partner with those things when there's public benefit. So I think as it relates to the Plaza Ranch project, we have to talk about the public benefit, and of course, I think the obvious response is that the California State University opportunity is the benefit to the public that is extraordinary. And for me, as we look at not only Sunset industrial area plan, but really all of south Plaza, in some ways, if we can envision the highest level of outcome with the University of Work, California State University, William Jessup, who's already here but growing, but also the highest vision possible with Sierra College and how it interfaces with all of that in terms of higher education, it clearly would be a transformative vision for Plaza County, very much like Hewlett Packard when they came to town, and Interstate 80 when it got cut through our county, and the railroad before that, and the Gold Rush before that. So, you know, I'm very happy to have that discussion.
Were you around for all of this, Robert?
Yeah, sadly, I wasn't.
I was.
And the PCCP started before any of those things. But that is by way of county policy, and I think it's important to make that transparent, because whereas our regulatory processes are the methods by which we guarantee that there is that public benefit, there are myriad of methods by which exceptions to those regulations can be brought forward, but they become transparent, and I think we want to do that same thing here. So a technical question by way of all of that I have is that, I think, Michelle, you know that I'm a strong believer in market-driven economics and the outcomes that result from that with actually efficient and cost-effective regulation that is not excessive. So I don't want a county to do a specific plan that's separate and distinct and circumvented from the market processes, and so I guess I'd like any of you to talk to me about how you think that county should. I know we're starting from a specific plan concept that was brought forward through the development process to begin with, that's sort of a starting point. But if we end up planning something that doesn't have any market basis to us and/or connectivity to feedback from the owner of the property, then we might have a grand plan that never gets built because there's no market for it. And I don't want that to happen, obviously, particularly if the public is going to fund the ticket or a portion of that ticket, even if there is reimbursement. So could you comment on that question, please?
I'll take a simple approach. I think with every specific plan, you have the plan going in, and they're certainly market-driven and evolve over time. So based upon market dynamics, we would expect what we see as the vision today, you know, there are amendments that may come in and react off the market demand, and we certainly would bring those forward to consideration. We've also looked at with EPS and their economic analysis kind of reacted off Plaza Ranch and looking at a capacity of 500 to 800 acres, I believe, 500 to 800 acres of additional demand that Sunset could make. And so we've looked at those economic metrics. This project would be required to do a fiscal update as well as a finance plan and economic impact analysis. We'd be looking for those studies also to be done. And so I think we're cognizant of what the market demand is. We've looked at innovation districts. We've done an extensive amount of research, looking at UC Merced and how they've planned out, and other universities that have developed more recently. And so we're trying to be cognizant of what works, what dynamics works, and also the change in demographic and what demands are of the millennials coming forward. There's a Village Center that's proposed with this development, which you can really see, kind of a millennial-driven type of market dynamic there with more higher density, as well as feeding off the universities. So we're trying to be cognizant of all those, but it's a longer planning period, specific plans are 20-year horizons, and we do expect changes, as with everyone, and it reacts off the market demands over time.
Sure. And then, any comments on schedule as it relates to the Plaza Ranch specific plan process itself? What would be your expected outcomes, sequel work, et cetera?
I'm guessing, and I'd look for Michael and Sherri to correct me, but it's going to be about an 18 to 24-month process from start to finish, I would guess.
That's, it's what hopes steps to identify in the next 30 days and come back to you on May 3rd with a very defined schedule for completion.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
I would add that we do have the opportunity, as we're looking and working with McKay and Somp, over the technical studies that have been done, to really leverage off that and try and catch back up and not lose time. And so we do have a good dynamic here to really hit the ground running.
Good. Thank you very much. With that, then Kirk.
I'm sorry. Well, since you brought up history, I figured we'll step into the wayback machine, and we'll step back to 1994 when we were updating the county-wide general plan. Supervisor Wiegand was on the planning commission at the time, and I sat here as the board considered not only a very thick policy document, but also four specific plan areas that were brought forward. The Bickford Ranch area, which in some iteration is hopefully moving forward, Plaza Vineyards, which is finally moving forward, and then Stanford Ranch West, today known as Plaza Ranch, as well as another project out in what currently is our Curry Creek area. And at that time, there were, in fact, three votes to approve the Stanford Ranch West project as a new growth area, much like we did with Bickford and Plaza Vineyards. However, one of those votes was not my colleague at the time, Alex Ferrer. And given Alex's time on the board, the fact that it was his district, it was important to me that I have Alex's vote on the overall county-wide general plan, and part of the cost of that, unfortunately, was pulling the Stanford Ranch West project out of the list of approved projects. And so Plaza Vineyard and Bickford moved forward, Stanford Ranch West did not, but we did get a county-wide general plan adopted in 1994 with Alex Ferrer's vote on a 4-1. And so it was important, and this project became a casualty, unfortunately, of that compromise. I'm just very glad that here, 22 years later, we have the opportunity as a county to step in and perhaps aggressively work to move forward a project that would have been, over the years, I believe, a significant economic catalyst for our county, for our region. And with our action today to direct staff to move forward with processing a project-level specific plan and associated environmental documents, we will be positioning ourselves as one of the few counties in the region that becomes truly shovel-ready, if you will, for economic development opportunities that are being pursued through our association with the Greater Sacramento Group. And right now, Barry Broome, the CEO of Greater Sacramento, is standing here. He would tell you the single greatest impediment he has to locating significant job creators, Fortune 50 companies in the Sacramento region, is the lack of availability of dirt that is ready for campus-type environments. And with this kind of a project moving forward, not just the specific plan, but what I would encourage staff to look at also, is what is your estimate of return on investment of not just the dollars we're spending on the planning process, but upfronting some of the infrastructure costs necessary that encourage private development, private money in the ground out there? What does that private money in the ground then do to the assessed valuation of that property, given our tax rate area that we have out here, which is so favorable to the county? If we are borrowing money at what we can borrow for as a county, putting it into the ground, seeing the resulting improvements in the ground in terms of not just the entitlement, but actual construction, division into smaller parcels, and what that means to our assessed valuation out there? What kind of an absorption rate would we need to achieve in the ground out there in order to not just pay ourselves back, but pay ourselves back with a handsome return? And then have that conversation with our friends at Greater Sacramento, with our own economic development folks, to understand, okay, are these absorption rates achievable? Because if we look and say, by putting X number of dollars in the ground today at our 3% borrowing rate, Janine, somewhere in that neighborhood, 3% borrowing rate-ish, you know, in 10 years, we will have yielded that X plus or X times, then why wouldn't we not just move forward with the planning, but also with some of the infrastructure improvements? And then, you know, because you guys are sitting around with nothing else to do, you know, let's look at some of the other opportunities we have with Warwick, where we're already, we took the unprecedented position as a county, we never before stepped forward and said, we're going to process these permits as the county and help the developer along through that process. We're doing it with Warwick, and that's a great thing. Are there other things that we can be doing there as well? Because I think every member of this board recognizes the transformative potential of these projects, not just for our county, but for our region. So thank you for getting us to this point. I encourage you, full steam ahead, get us to the next thresholds, and if there's anything real or perceived standing in your way, let us know what it is.
Thank you.
Now I'll open it up to the public. And if you don't mind, Mr. Phillips, I would like to hear your comments as it relates to making sure, I'm assuming you're a representative of the property owner, who I understand cannot be here today, but I would like to hear some feedback from the private sector, if you will, as it relates to the question I'd had about making sure we don't plan something in a vacuum that ends up having no market viability.
Good morning, Supervisor Wiegand, members of the board. George Phillips, on behalf of Plaza Ranch, Inc. Phrases this morning like unprecedented, outside-the-box, innovative, first-time-ever. It is really a very encouraging morning and discussion. The strategic importance of the geography of this project is really something that does not exist elsewhere in the Sacramento region. What this property has the potential of bringing to the county, given that location between the three cities, and the opportunities with SacState and Sierra College are truly unprecedented, and it's exciting times. And I think that on behalf of Plaza Ranch and Holly, who I know wished she could be here, we really want to recognize the leadership on the part of the county to step up at a time when this project could have languished and commitments from those higher education entities could have gone away, and step up in a big way. Both leadership at the board level, your staff, is extremely encouraging, and I know that we are more than willing to work side by side with your staff as this process goes forward and prove out the economics of this project and what the land uses should be here, and the result of which will be something, I think, truly compelling that's never been done clearly in the region, and I'm not sure even elsewhere in the state. So thank you all, staff included, for So thank you, all, staff included, for that outside-the-box thinking and first-time-ever approach to getting things done. And we're just, couldn't be happier to be a sidekick on this, I think, or sidecar, but working with your staff as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address this item? See none. I always like to check when we don't have any action, but specific staff seeking direction to make sure that you don't have any remaining questions about direction.
I think it would be important for clarification from the board to direct staff to move forward and come back on May third with a very precise scope of work, estimate of cost, and work plan for the proposed project as set forth this morning.
Perfect. Thanks, Michael. Pleasure, the board.
Yeah, go do that. And if May third is, you can't make it any sooner, then we'll settle for May third. How's that? I'm good with tomorrow, if that works for you.
Chair recognizes a 5-0 affirmation of that very specific question. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, we will now jump back to our next timed item, which is ten-ten Public Works Parking Restriction, Lake Clementine and Mount Vernon Road.
Good morning, Chairman.
Morning.
Members of the board, Stephanie Holloway with Public Works and Facilities. I have with me Andy Fisher from our Parks Division as well. So the item before you now is a request to establish parking restrictions on sections of Lake Clementine Road and Mount Vernon Road. Just a bit of history on both of these. These two locations are adjacent to local and state recreation areas, and as a region, we've become quite the draw for recreational visitors, especially during holidays and peak mild weekends in the spring and in the fall. Associated with this, overflow parking can be a challenge for us in these areas adjacent and on roadway sections. So the first location that we want to talk to you about this morning is Lake Clementine Road. Again, this road serves as access to Lake Clementine itself, and there's a boat-launch facility at the end. Near the boat-launch facility, the road is fairly narrow. There's a prominent one-hundred-and-eighty-degree curve. You can see kind of the beginning of this curve here in this photo and associated parking. Due to the narrowness of the road, we believe that parking along this section, as you're seeing in this photo, significantly restricts the ability for emergency vehicles and, you know, trucks with trailers, big boats that are accessing the boat-launch area. And for that reason, we are asking for a restriction along this section, basically from the state rec boundary, four-hundred-and-seventy-five feet up this road. You can see kind of the total length of this road right here. So it's a small section near the boat-launch, near that curve that's hard to maneuver if you get down there with a large vehicle. The second section that we wanted to address today is along Mount Vernon Road, roughly three-tenths of a mile east and west of Mir's Road, the Mir's Road intersection. This location is near the Hidden Falls Regional Park, and since the park's expansion in two thousand and thirteen, visitorship has increased dramatically. If you recall, we were before your board last spring to establish the parking restrictions along Mir's Drive and Mir's Place. We heard a fair amount of concern from the neighbors at that time that adjacent roadside parking was, again, a restriction for emergency vehicles and a concern for overall use of that portion of the roadway. So I'm going to give you a couple of examples here of what we've seen. This is Hidden Falls Regional Park. This is kind of a prephoto for you. This was a peak weekend before we were hosting rangers, and Andy's going to talk to you a little bit about our current operation. Just to give you an example, this is the existing parking area, the established parking area. This section up here is essentially the overflow. So you can see we've had voluntary overflow into these areas up the road and then historically onto Mir's Place, Mir's Drive. So when we brought this before you last spring, we were optimistic that the restrictions that we placed on Mir's Drive would be enough of a deterrent to, you know, give people options to go somewhere else. What we've seen since that time, and like I said, this is happening on holiday weekends, spring and fall, kind of mild weather weekends, we're seeing parking along this section of Mount Vernon, which is a kind of a different concern for us. So this is Mount Vernon Road, east of the intersection with Mir's, and you can see the parking that's happening along the roadside. So the concern that we have from Mount Vernon Road is this road, although, you know, we have eleven-foot travel lanes here, we have very minimal improved roadside shoulder. And so the parking does create kind of a restriction for us along the roadway. And even more importantly, with this parking, we feel that, you know, patrons of the park who are willing to walk in, you know, the mile-plus into the park, are required to park and, or walk, in most cases, alongside the travelway, along the roadside edge, and between the travelway and parked cars. So that's a concern for us. Additionally, this section of the road is currently not posted. What that means for us is that it does fall on the California Vehicle Code for prima facia speed, which in this instance is a fifty-five mile-an-hour forcible speed. So again, another concern for the parking that we're currently observing. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Andy. He can kind of talk to you about park operation and some future plans that they have for the park. Any questions for me?
I don't see any at this time. Thanks, Steph.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. From the perspective of the Parks Division, I wanted to go over what we're doing, what we have done to date, what we are planning to do in the future. As the manager of Hidden Falls Regional Park, it's been an extraordinary problem that we've seen, a problem associated with our success in the popularity of Hidden Falls Regional Park. We've seen our rangers turning away between three and five hundred cars per day on peak weekends. That happens in the spring and the fall. There's a respite when the grass gets dry and the weather gets hot, and also when it rains in the winter. We're seeing these times concentrated around spring and fall. We've been hearing quite a few stories from folks in the neighborhood. We empathize with them. In fact, I believe I had heard that some were going to try to make it today and may be here to want to share with you some of their stories as well. And so we wanted to, while we think parking is a very important step, the no-parking, it's a multi-pronged approach, I think, to solve this issue, and I wanted to go over what we've done so far and what we plan to do in the future, and then get your feedback, if I could, on how we proceed with the future components. So what's happened to date, if you saw the before picture with people scattered willy-nilly, parking all over Hidden Falls, we have expanded the parking since then. So there's formalized parking for, we started with fifty formal parking spaces. We can now hold about seventy-five. That's the extent of our use permit, so they don't have to be parking against the fence lines and ditches. And then we've also increased the equestrian parking area, so we can hold about one and a half to two times the number of equestrian trailers that we could before. So that, all those just finished up last fall, those expansions. This picture before you was taken before that time. And as Stephanie said, we did implement no parking on Mir's in spring of two thousand and fifteen. We've also hired a ranger service that's been a great addition to the park. They are onsite all the time, so whenever overflow begins to happen, they monitor that. They currently then put somebody in the parking lot to make sure, to monitor, and then somebody now on the corner of Mount Vernon and Mir's. So they have radios between one another. They can talk and express when there are parking places available, and then the people on the corner of Mir's and Mount Vernon will restrict anybody coming into park. They also have maps to suggest to other people who have driven a long way, other places that they can go that have hiking, so they're hopefully not as disappointed for a long drive. There are other areas that they can go to. So that's what we've done to date, and then what we're planning to do in the future to continue to help alleviate this. We do, we're formulating a proposal to bring back to your board, a recommendation on charging for parking. Most other areas of this type, large-scale open space with trails, are charging now. State Parks does charge ten dollars for all of their entrances to Auburn State Recreation Area and Folsom State Recreation Area. So even the other item within this item, parking along Lake Clementine, those folks all are expected to pay ten dollars to park at Lake Clementine. So we are one of the few areas that don't have any charge for parking, and we do think that that probably drives some people's choice to come there in the first place. So we'd like to formulate a plan to charge for parking. We're really not interested in a moneymaker for the park. That may be a byproduct, but we're really interested in that as an overall user experience improvement to relieve that influx into the park. And we're working on some of the final details. How much is the right amount? Do we want to match ASRA with ten dollars, or is another amount more appropriate? Do we charge always? Do we charge during the times we know are the peak times? So those are the things we're still formulating in our mind. And then we don't want to create another push like we created with, or it's been witnessed from the parking along Mir's Road. We're seeing now, of course, that people are incentivized to walk a long way in, and we don't want to charge and incentivize people to park elsewhere and walk in to avoid the ten-dollar charge. So we'll have to address how that would work. So that's charge for parking. Additionally, we are just about to start an expanded environmental impact report for the future of Hidden Falls. Today, Hidden Falls is twelve-hundred acres, but we do have rights. We've partnered with the Placer Land Trust over an entirety of four thousand acres that goes up to the north and east of Hidden Falls Regional Park and would give us rights to put trails and public access and all of that that would go all the way up to the Bear River in the Lone Star Bell Road area. So we do expect to return to your board before long. We have grant funding to start an environmental impact report that before any of that expansion happens, and I'll emphasize the word "before," we would study that. We'd reach out to the community, do a full expanded environmental impact report from the one that we did for the existing park. And part of that, one of the key components of that, would be to look for totally different parking areas. We would look at the Garden Bar area, where we do have access from Garden Bar. That's a tricky location because it's three miles of very narrow, windy road. So whatever parking is appropriate there, we would have to find what that number is and then how to regulate it, but we do find that there are some opportunities out there. And then also look for opportunities for parking, which we don't have today. We'd be looking for opportunities up along the Lone Star North Bell Road area. And then further out than that, some other things that are on the plate that we've looked at, that are not, that are a little trickier, maybe more expensive to implement, but still on the plate, as we realize we do need to address this. So one we've looked at is transit. The expense would be pretty high. It would have to be pretty highly subsidized, and also logistically kind of tricky. So for example, our rangers close the gates at night, and they know how many people are still in the park by how many cars are there. But if you did have a transit service, you wouldn't know who's still in there and stranded. You'd have to work out a lot of those kind of details of transit wherever to be an option. But again, it's one of those things on the table, just depending on how bad this problem exacerbates. And then a reservation system. We expect to update our entire county reservation system over the next year from a manual system to an electronic web-based system. So that would be an option, that we could actually restrict it to a predetermined, reserved number of people using the park on any given day. So with that, I would turn it back, I believe, to Stephanie and to your input.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, Jennifer, and then Jack.
So I don't think I heard this, but much to my shame, I grew up in Palo Alto, and we had a park called Foothills Park, which you had to be a Palo Alto resident to enter. You had to show identification. Have we considered restricting entrance to the park until, at least until we've resolved some of these parking issues, to Placer County residents only?
Very good. Write that down.
Okay, thanks. Glad to help.
Jack.
Yeah, two things. Have we gone outside to get somebody to possibly reconfigure the space here, the parking space? I know that there are companies out there that specialize in taking properties and creating a plan that, you know, maximizes the number of slots that are available. The other question I have is, how far is this location from our campus up in Auburn?
It's about three miles, I believe. Maybe a little longer.
My other thought would be that we think about maybe a parking garage on campus. We've already got property there. I'd much rather have them pay for parking, you know, and be bussed down as opposed to charging a fee for them to get in. I mean, that's just my thought, so.
Very well. Jim, then Kirk.
Yeah, I would just, along those lines, given that weekends are typically the busiest day, I would think we have plenty of adequate surface parking already at the Dewitt Center that's not being used by our county employees on the weekends, where, to Jack's point, we might be able to coordinate some kind of a transit system, a pay-to-ride transit system that might make a little bit of sense there.
Very good. Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, let me just say I'm not really excited about charging for parking out there, but I'm willing to keep an open mind. And as far as the, I know you've got rangers out there handing out different opportunities for other camping, or hiking trails throughout the region, but has been any thought of giving, putting some signs up on both the west side of Mount Vernon and the east side, where as they come in, they'll see a sign that says, "Sorry, but the park's full," and maybe have a list of, has there been any thought of that? Is that?
No.
It seems to me that, you know, people drive quite a ways to get there, and then they realize that the park's full.
Yep, yep. Or even changeable message signs, something like that. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, so. It's kind of sad, but, I mean, it's nice that we have this beautiful, beautiful park, and now we've created this other problem for residents out there. So hopefully we can come to some resolution that makes it compatible for everyone.
And I'd just add, kind of a disconcerting and enjoyable at the same time, the longest discussion in the board debate, actually wasn't much of a debate, about whether or not we should acquire the property, was whether or not if we bought it, would anybody actually show up?
Yeah.
Not kidding, not kidding. But so this isn't a pressing thing, but I think we need to start looking at within the context of all of our open-space work, this part being a component, in my mind, of this big umbrella called Placer Legacy, but so the recreational component was always identified. But particularly with some of our partners, like Placer Land Trust, potentially even others, kind of taking an inventory of the supply, not only in the county, but in times that I've gone writing, which is most of what I do when I'm going to these kinds of places. I've gone out of county, Nevada County, gone out to Folsom Lake, North Fork of the American. So maybe we should sometime, as we weave our way through this whole strategic notion of the supply and the demand for this particular kind of product, take a look at all of that and where, I like your idea of noting that if we are not, if we're the only person not charging parking, we're driving a higher demand in part to Hidden Falls, at least during peak periods, and somehow try to figure out how the market mechanisms can equalize that portion of it. And yeah, I'm not opposed to considering a fee for parking. I really like some of the ideas about the shuttle services, particularly as related to the Garden Bar side of the park, because of the, I live in proximity to that road, and a lot of my neighbors have expressed to me their concern about that. But maybe there could be some low-income exceptions also. The reservation thing could maybe help facilitate all of that. And then finally, a question I have is, what, how does the parking lot and the onsite parking translate into the occupancy of the park itself with the hikers and horseback folks and the cyclists? Because in places like Yellowstone Glacier, other places, national parks, where you can have a very intense backcountry experience, it's by reservation in those popular places, even though you're in the backcountry and you have to walk miles to get there with a pack. So that, you do disperse the population so that those who are seeking that kind of experience don't feel like they're walking in downtown San Francisco, because there are supposed to be different kinds of experiences, not to mention the impact that it can have on the trails and some of the vegetation, those kinds of things. Are we, are you starting to observe overuse of the park itself, particularly in the parts that are close to the parking?
Precisely, we are. So we're seeing user trails show up, we're seeing concentrated traffic, and that's one of the reasons that, on the beginning of our list, is not to continue to expand and expand that parking lot right here that you see on your to expand and expand that parking lot right here that you see on your screen, because we do think that we're reaching a point where capacity on peak days is starting to diminish the experience. You're just putting a lot of people in one place at one time.
Kirk, and Jennifer, both have your lights.
Yeah, along the lines of transit, I don't know why we wouldn't simply open this up for private transit providers to simply give us proposals. If we're willing to make, you know, the parking lot at the fab building or whatever, or at CEDRA as the centralized drop-off point, the county will make it known to folks that there are transit opportunities available. They can park for free. They pay on a pay-per-service. Let private providers bid essentially for the opportunity to shuttle folks back and forth. And these days, it would be easy enough with an app on my phone to see where the bus is and its back-and-forth route. I know what my time is. You start looking at the spots out here. There's absolutely no reason why we couldn't number the parking spots, have somebody be able to go online for next Saturday. I see spot number six is available. I'm going to pay a nominal fee to reserve that for three hours. I print out my dashboard ticket. I put that on my dashboard. I drive out there for my allotted three hours. It's open for the other three hours afterward, because if I'm not out of there, I'm going to get a ticket, because I've bought my parking ticket for my three hours that I'm going to enjoy the park. People know I've got parking opportunities out here. I can reserve. I can show up out there. I can park, or I can go out to the Dewitt Center and get on a bus and pay four bucks or whatever it is and ride the bus out there. And there are all kinds of great technological tools we could use that I think really get our arms around this problem. And those that we can't fit comfortably onsite, drive them to the alternative, well, in theory, force them to the alternative location, but give them a real option.
Thank you. And in a similar vein of public-private partnership, we've seen some enterprising neighbors opening up their pastures and charging parking as well. That's a discussion ongoing with the Planning Department of how that works with zoning and how that might be formalized. But another example of private-public partnership, perhaps.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just want to kind of, I think, circle back and encapsulate a lot of what I've heard today to make sure that we consider all of these things. So I think potentially a parking fee is something that the board, while we don't love, we might want to take a look at. The Auburn State Recreation Area, as you know, instituted one about two years ago now, I believe. It frankly hasn't made much of a dent in their visitation. There are almost a million visitors a year, and that's just the ones they count in the confluence area. I think the shuttle idea, whether public, private, or some combination thereof, is really worth looking at. I would strongly encourage us, at least until we get a better handle on this, to look at limiting it to Placer County residents. And, you know, while it may be very disappointing for someone to drive up from Elk Grove, until we get a handle on it, I think we owe it to the neighbors in the area and to our own residents who frankly bought and paid for this, to make sure that they have the expectation for the visitation that they plan on making. And then last, I know we're also in the process of doing a Parks Master Plan update, sort of countywide. I think this is the opportunity to really take a deeper look into this, to figure out, you know, not just this park, but all of them. We have other parks that are highly, highly visited. As you know, Speedboat Beach in Tahoe, highly visited park, many of the same challenges that we have here. This is the opportunity to look at, how do we incentivize some of our underused parks? Because we do have some underused parks. And how do we minimize the impacts on our overused parks? Bear River Campground, you know, the instant that those campgrounds, campsites come available for reservations in the spring, they're gone for the whole summer. You can't get it. So we need to really start thinking about, as crazy as it seems, because there's so much open space around us, it is so heavily used, we need to think about how do we either drive people to some of our underused parks, or how do we offer more opportunities for people to recreate? Because that's why people moved here in many cases, for the recreational opportunities Placer County has to offer. Just my thoughts.
Okay, so I want to give anybody from the public a chance to comment, but more specifically on the request for an urgency ordinance specific to the Lake Clementine area and the Hidden Falls Park area as discussed. So is there anyone from the public that would like to just step forward and state your name, please?
Good morning. My name is Sam Fraser, and I live on Mount Vernon Road, and I have copies of letters and photographs I'd like to present.
Sure. Obviously, everybody. Clark to the board, please.
Thank you for hearing me today, and I represent only myself and my wife. And I thank you for, Auburn Sunset Rotary Club thanks you for visiting Supervisor Holmes and Supervisor Montgomery, and we appreciate, you must have a tremendous love for this community, its people and its lands, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for serving. While I represent only myself and my wife, there are many other people that are here that live on the area that was just described. And the proposed parking area does, comes ironically just to my house. It will not solve my problem. I would like to direct your attention to the photographs that I've submitted. These are directly in front of my property. We regularly have, they don't, we have, you should see, it looks like a disaster zone out there. We have no parking signs up and down. They don't pay any attention to those signs at all. They park on my property. This last week, we had our water main ran down for the third time. At about 650, this last time, it's going to be $800 to repair. I'm doing that. We've had substantial damage to our property. However, the biggest problem is we have people that make this hike, not just .3 miles where it ends at my property, but at least down to Little Hill Road and further. Putting no parking signs is not going to resolve it. They're going to still be walking past. The big problem is we have people sitting out there in their trucks afterwards, partying, drinking, sitting on my land. And every weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, and then they don't want to have the open containers, so they throw it on my property. And my gardener spends about 1.1 hour per day cleaning up our yard, doing repairs and things like that. As you can see by the berm, we have to have a drainage berm there. People think that's just off-road. Well, they come up on the berm, and you can see they destroy that. And that is very, very important to our specific property. And I'm going to allow, they, some of the people that are here asked me to read theirs, and I can't do it in the short 42 seconds that I have left, so I'm going to ask them to come speak. But this past weekend, what's not in that letter, and I do submit on the letter, is that I was driving in my hybrid car, which is a silent car, and I came up, and you have children dead center of the roadway doing the type road thing on the yellow lines. And I was so careful. I was so slow. Around the, they're looking at me, yelling at me, and around the corner comes a truck at normal speed, and I'm right at the corner of Mirr's Road, I mean, at the corner of Mount Vernon Road where it turns suddenly left. And he's going a regular speed. He slams on his brakes. They're now yelling and giving him the finger and that sort of thing. Anyway, that was, that just occurred. Someone is going to get seriously hurt. The answer is not only putting up no parking signs. This park should be closed indefinitely until the county can come up with some other alternative. And I know, just going over, we were on a cruise ship in another part of the world. Somebody's standing there saying, they love to hike, they're talking about hikes. They said, "Oh, we're looking forward to coming to Hidden Falls. Do you know where that is?" Right down my corner, you know, my corner. So the people that are coming in here, and they're not Auburn people. They are outsiders. We get a lot of people from Sacramento. Thank you very much. I know my time is up.
Thank you.
But there are several people here you should hear from.
Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. I am Sam's neighbor also. He lives directly next door to me. And I appreciate the time for, to go speak with you all. Unfortunately, yes, it has become an extreme hazard difficulty. A lot of stuff we've been dealing with due to, how to put it, the type of people that are coming in, the partying, the whatnot, is not only
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Dax Carden.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I thought you called that.
Thank you.
It's about the partying. I know they're enjoying. There's a lot of families, a lot of bicyclists and such. And the first year when we came here was great, all right? Quiet neighborhood, the whole nine yards, the deer, you know, wonderful. It's what we all moved here for. The second year, it became a bit of a nuisance, not so bad, because the Hidden Falls, I guess, Facebooked or whatever happened. It started blowing up. And this was wonderful, I mean, great. Hey, everyone's enjoying the park. This is nice. But now we've got all the cars on the road. And now we're getting a lot of traffic and a lot of foot traffic. And for some reason, this past year, the element has significantly changed. Property damage, beer bottles, cans, hypodermic syringes. I'm talking everything, all right? We have a lot of ladies in our neighborhood that are single or husbands out, like myself. I travel a lot. My wife's home alone. Okay? We have our dog protection, blah, blah, blah. The alarm company, wonderful. Doesn't help when they drive through your yard and do donuts, because they're mad. As you put a cone up, "Don't drive up my driveway. You can't get out." All right? So they decide to drive up the berms and through my yard and do donuts to express their disconcern. The racial slurs, comments that are being yelled at the neighbors. There's, "Why are they blocking this off their stupid damn," you know? I mean, this is it. Because we've tried to block off the areas that are hazards. Right across the street, Dan, he is a high patrolman. He's done his efforts to block an area they've been parking at. One of the reasons he blocked it is they're driving so far over, the NID ditch is right below. They're driving over and knocking stuff into the ditch, blocking the ditches. They're causing new property damage as well. NIDs now got cleaned up. The rocks, the debris that's being knocked down into the ditches. And on our side, I mean, like I said, they're tearing up the lawn, they're tearing up the property, and then all the trash. The major concern, the break-ins, the, that I've been told about with the neighbors, vandalism, I mean, they've driven down my big trashcans and knocked them right into the mailboxes. And they think it's funny. This is, I don't know what's going on, why the element has changed from the families and, you know, whatnot to this, it's like degrading. And my wife, just the other day, oh, I apologize. Can I finish?
If you could wrap up your
Yes. Just the other day, she's standing out in the yard, lets the dog out. He barks. They start picking up rocks to chuck at my dog. He's in our yard. They're parking along the edge. It's like, what is your problem? We're here. We have the right to be here. Not to damage our property, not to damage, you know, and basically assault our, the ladies in the neighborhood all have been slurred to in different aspects. So don't know exactly what your solution would be. The no parking, it needs to be extended much further, much, much further, as in Sam even stated, that they're walking in two miles. If they're willing to do that, free parking up here, say, "There's your hike." Don't walk it. Even if you don't have the shuttles. But thank you to your time.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just me too. Probably 15 seconds more, 20 seconds. I'm Gary Whaler. I've lived on the corner of Mirr's and Mount Vernon for over 38 years. Our lifestyle has been very peaceful and quiet until Hidden Falls Regional Park was built. We endured all the cement trucks, gravel, heavy equipment trucks, along with their workers for years. We own our land to the fence line across Mirr's Drive. The county has easement for use of the road. The property along both fence lines is private property. Last year, on weekends and holidays and occasional summer days, a park became an issue in our neighborhood. Lately this year, we have been inundated with 250 to 300-plus pedestrians plus 45 to 50 dogs walking on our property every Saturday and again on Sunday. We have had damage to our property. Trash on the ground, trash thrown over the fence, plus dog feces everywhere. We have no privacy on these days. We have had people taking pictures of our home, equipment, and RV. It's only a matter of time before someone will be climbing over our high fence and breaking into our home RV. The foot traffic is so bad, as they walk on both sides of Mirr's Road and stop traffic. Someone will eventually be maimed or killed. Also, the foot traffic and vehicle traffic on Mount Vernon is very dangerous for the same reason. People are parking in the bike lanes on Mount Vernon on the 15 mile-hour corner. There's barely enough room for two cars to pass each other on that corner. The people parking there have taken over the bicycles, have nowhere to go. They too are in danger of a bad accident. I am 79, my wife is 75. We've been retired for 25 years, and have lived a stress-free life here in the Auburn area. The past few years, with parking traffic picking up on both Mirr's Drive and Mount Vernon Road, has been a disaster. I want to add that Mirr's Road is a one-way road. You drive in, you must drive out. We would like to live the rest of our lives here at our home on Mirr's Drive. That is not possible. It is very stressful for us with this Hidden Falls problem. There is no way for any of us in Mirr's Drive to sell our home at the fair market price. All of us would take a big devaluation. My proposals are as follows. Put close signs on all Hidden Falls signs leading to Hidden Falls Park in every direction immediately. If the park can't be closed immediately, no parking signs should be put up on the mile on each direction from Mount Vernon, from Mirr's Drive. These signs should read "No Parking." Citation will be issued and tow vehicles at owner's expense. Eliminate parking lot at the winery on the hill opposite Mirr's Drive. This is a free park. Why are the, someone allowed to collect $10 a car to park? This should eliminate foot traffic to the park. The park ranger will have to monitor and not allow foot traffic into the park on Mirr's Drive. If this issue has not been resolved by summer, I can't imagine putting up with this seven days a week. Yes, people, the supervisors have created a monster, and the only solution is to close the park. There was mention of using a park reservation system. That will not work here. I'm surprised at the millions of dollars that was spent on Hidden Falls Park, that someone did not have the bright idea to use some of that money to acquire property on the east side of Hidden Falls off of Bell Road for at least two more entrances. My last solution, let's take back our neighborhood. Why not make Mirr's Drive a gated community? Please take the appropriate action to protect our community and our home. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this issue? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Greg Stetzer, and my wife is Candace, and we live at 7945 Mount Vernon Road, which is right at the 15 mile-an-hour corner west of Mirr's. We moved there one year ago in March, and expected a peaceful community like we left in Newcastle. We downsized and moved into a smaller home. And it has been a real surprise. Although our sellers of our home told us that there was traffic, we figured that was minimal. There was parking at the park, and we would not see cars on a regular basis. Parking in front of our house, all along our property, you can see an average of 10 to 12 cars. People get out of their cars. It's a mile and a quarter from our house to the parking lot where they can find a restroom. I have had guys getting out of their car. I'm out mowing, and I see them urinating in front of my house. It's, this is just a small portion of what you see on a regular basis. I'm sorry. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your consideration of everything that's being proposed. Parking, I agree with Gary, should be a mile from Mirr's in both directions. One-third of a mile doesn't cover what's being parked on now. And those people, like I think we've heard, already heard, are hikers. They're already hiking a mile and a quarter from where they're at. Another mile down the road is really nothing. It's just 15 minutes longer for their day. I heard a proposal from Mr. Whaler about three-hour reservation. I think a reservation for parking's a good idea, but now we have a problem with regulating it. Somebody who's, we Somebody who's, we don't even see highway patrol patrolling the road as often as they should to cite people that are parked over the fog line into the actual roadway. We've seen one car towed in a year that was parked over the line, and that's a, that should be an automatic thing. Parked over the line, tow them. There's a lot of frustration. It's really, it's heartbreaking. I want to, I'd just like you to consider more the people that live there and not the hikers that are, and the park people that are using it. It's, we should be primary, not secondary. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public? Here's seen none, I'll close the public hearing. Are you, please hurry up and state your name for the record.
My name's Troy Peterson. I live across the street from Sam. I'll be brief. All of us spend a lot of money to live where we live, and we, and there's value where we live. We like being in a rural area and everything else like that. I've lived there for over fifteen years. One of my concerns, it wasn't brought up today, and so far I've heard a lot of good ideas, but nothing really bulletproof in my mind is going to make this go away. I like your idea about local or being in Placer County only, because a lot of folks are coming a long way. I think the, taking a no parking zone at least a mile beyond what we're showing here, the one-third, and we're going to have to enforce it. As you guys indicated earlier, there was a big investment made to put this park together, right, in Placer County? I don't think we should feel guilty taking money for parking. And once the park is filled, that's it. We don't let any more people in there. And the no parking signs, I think will be a deterrent. But a bigger concern of mine right now is I haven't heard anything that's telling me this is going to go away. And I'm worried about my property value. And right now, I, I could see where it's taken a hit because of what's going on there. I wouldn't want to move in there, and certainly if I had small children. I wouldn't want to live in an area like that because they run out in the street for a ball. And again, I'm surprised, as Sam said, that something bad hasn't already happened. Cyclists especially, it's a cycling mecca out there, and with those cars pulled up, there is no room. And lastly, I think there's barely enough room for emergency vehicles with all those cars there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. Jack?
No, I was just going to say that, you know, from what I'm hearing, these are a lot, there are a lot of valid issues here. And, you know, I think the action that the board is contemplating is going to help. But, you know, and I hate to make the comparison, but what I'm hearing here is the same stuff that I hear with the homeless shelter. It boggles my mind. There is no magic bullet, folks, but we can make things better. And that's what I hope to do, you know, in the future with taking this action as a start. But I know that staff has a lot of things on their mind and a lot of data and a lot of ideas to try to make it better than it is. But there is no, you know, if you came here today looking for the panacea, it's not going to happen. But I can guarantee you that we'll make it better.
Jim?
I'd like to take a look at the opportunity to have a park reservation system online, and when the reservations are full, just close down the site or just put, park is closed, so we can monitor the amount of people. And then as we work forward to find another alternative as far as parking off-site shuttle of that nature, but I think that's probably the quickest way. I don't know how long it would take to set that up, but I think that's probably the quickest way. Just have, once the park hits X amount of reservations, no more, that's it. And then we have to have some kind of a flashing sign if people are on their way, letting them know ahead of time that the park is closed. Other than that, I'd hate to close it, but that may be an alternative until we come around with something, something that'll work for, make these homeowners feel more comfortable.
Jennifer?
I would suggest, based on the input that we've heard from homeowners today, that we do expand the footprint of the no parking signs and ask for increased patrol, county patrol, both PCSO, and then reach out to CHP and ask them for additional patrol on this section. I don't think the map shows a full mile, but I would be interested in expanding beyond this one-third mile area, the no parking signs, and increasing enforcement within that area. And of course, following up on all the other suggestions that came forward today. But at this time, I'm certainly not supportive of closing the park. I think, I think there are things we can do to minimize and mitigate the issues that are going on out there and still allow people to recreate in one of our county parks.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
So...
The motion is to, the motion is to move forward with today's action, but to expand the area upon which the signs are posted potentially as far as a mile, and then move forward looking into the other suggestions that the board brought forward today.
So the motion is to...
Is that a motion?
The motion is to amend the ordinance that's before you. It's an urgency ordinance, so it'll take effect immediately. Just state in the location from Mount Vernon Road, one mile east and west of Mirers Drive. Is that the motion?
Yes.
And direct staff to look at some, some kind of online system where people need to make a reservation to use the park if that's possible. Is that...
Well, the only action before the board today is on the parking issue.
Okay. Okay. So the motion, Montgomery, second Duran. Any questions for staff, as to clarity? Could we have a roll call, please?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Wiggant?
Yes. Okay. And I think you generally got direction as to bringing this issue back, and I think the board wants pretty quick feedback and as well as some follow-up discussion at some point.
Thank you very much. You've given us a lot to work with.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
Our last timed item, ten-thirty item, is receive a presentation regarding the crime lab, coroner's operation feasibility study, and provide direction to staff. Good concern, but not good management timing strategy.
Good morning, Chairman Wiggant, members of the board. Becky Rigan from the county executive office. It's my pleasure to introduce this next item before you this morning, which is a presentation on the analysis and recommendations from the feasibility study regarding creation of a new crime lab and replacement of our existing coroner's facility. I'm joined today by core members of the feasibility planning team, District Attorney Scott Owens and Supervising District Attorney Clark Gelbach, Captain Mark Reed and Dennis Watt of the Sheriff's Office, and Lauren Featherstone from the County Executive Office. Your board will recall the 2015 Criminal Justice Master Plan identified twenty-one distinct recommendations for optimizing performance within the criminal justice system. Delays in obtaining essential forensic science services such as DNA and toxicology results were cited as having significant impact to resolving cases in a more timely manner, and was thus identified as one of the top priorities within that comprehensive plan. Following that presentation, staff initiated a request for proposals processed, which resulted in the contract with Smith Group JJR to assess Placer County's current forensic testing and coroner services capabilities and to identify system needs and recommendations. As part of the feasibility study, consultants coordinated tours of several crime lab and coroner facilities across the country, including in Baltimore, Maryland, Denver, Colorado, and Los Angeles, California, where we were able to not only tour modern facilities, but also able to understand the level of forensic analysis being conducted in other jurisdictions that we are not able to obtain here in Placer County. While noting the quality of work being achieved by our chief deputy coroner Dennis Watt in the nineteen-forties-era facility where he and his team currently conduct their work, the consultant's report also concludes that services could be improved with construction of a modern coroner's facility. The feasibility study anticipates construction costs of approximately thirty-seven-point-eight million dollars for creation of a new crime lab and approximately twenty-six-point-five million dollars for replacement of the current coroner's facility. At the conclusion of the presentation today, staff will be seeking your board's direction on next steps associated with this project to include further refinement of projected construction and operational costs, along with the development of potential financing options for your consideration in the development of the fiscal year 2016-17 budget. So at this point, I will turn the presentation over to Smith Group consultants and introduce Scott Krightline, Lead Science and Technology Architect, Greg Labarge, Director of the Denver Crime Lab, and we will all be available for questions at the conclusion of the presentation.
Thank you, Becky, and thank you, members of the board, for taking the time to hear our presentation, our findings on, on the coroner's, the crime lab's facility feasibility study. I see that our presentation has not quite exposed itself yet. Perhaps I can just continue to introduce myself, or I can go forward. What shall I do? Have you had a chance to actually see the presentation in the past at all? You have?
I was sent to come.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and go, and hopefully it will, it will, it will present itself here soon. Okay? First off, we felt it important to establish a vision for the facility at the very beginning, and that being the fact that the Placer County residents, with the reliable, efficient, cost-effective means of providing forensic services for their region. Of course, forensic services in any region is very important, as, as a population in Placer County continues to grow, this will be, continue to be a very important aspect of your, of your county. The goals, we identified four primary goals that, that we would actually focus our attentions on as we move forward, and one of the first of those being the investigative forensic capabilities, of course, being tantamount and critical to the aspects of this facility. Cost sustainability, to provide a cost benefit to the county, and to provide a reliable forensic analysis, of course. The importance of quality and reliability is vital to the success of any forensic facility as it moves in toward legal counsel and judicial...
They're rebooting it.
Okay.
We will see your presentation.
I will just continue on. Hopefully it will present, yes. I, great, okay. Thank you very much. Good. I'll just hold this in my hand until it comes up. Great. There it is, outstanding. Good. Here we are on the, on the reliable, so I've just discussed the first three, and reliable, oops, back, reliable forensic analysis. Credible and authoritative forensic investigative results are extremely important as well. And of course, it needs to be an independence to create a system operation that allows Placer County to ensure long-term success and access to forensic services. And we determined that, through the analysis, that we would focus in on the population of four thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, which we expect to be, through the California Department of Finance's, the demographic research institute, has determined around twenty, twenty-thirty-five is to reach a population of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, which was our target for goal of achieving a facility in basis, basic, a lot of the analysis that we completed on. So I'll turn the time over to Greg to go through our findings, actually.
I'm Greg Labarge. I'm Director of Forensics and Evidence Division for Denver Police Department, and coming to you from a city that's growing at about twenty thousand residents a year. Right now, two-hundred thousand people moved into Colorado in the last two years, is one example. So we've felt the strain on our law enforcement services. And when we came into Placer County to evaluate this, we can see, more or less, I can see where you are today, is somewhere where we were in about two thousand seven, two thousand eight, seeing the growth coming and trying to get prepared for that growth. So I come to you with a lot of experience dealing with that. So this slide lays out nine key findings for your crime lab and your forensic infrastructure. So basically, you're underserved. You really don't have the ability to have real-time information on criminal matters. So fingerprints, DNA, toxicology, wait for the state to complete that, or wait for private laboratories to complete that testing for you, and there's often a very large gap in time. And a gap in time in the criminal justice system is, means that the offender is still out on your streets offending. You're not realizing the advantages of those investigative forensics. So what's happening in the world now is the ability to project objective truth, objectivity with analysis is the central part of law enforcement, is the ability to support the law enforcement entity with objective science, especially using databases like AFIS for fingerprints, CODIS for DNA, NIBIN for shell casings, and other systems that allow you to get to the right suspect very quickly. There's a great improvement opportunity here. When you introduce a forensic architecture, it spreads excellence throughout the criminal justice community, because we operate in very high standards according to ISO or ISO. So you have an opportunity here to professionalize and improve all types of law enforcement services throughout the county. There will be a pressure to utilize investigative forensics. I'm telling you something that's already occurring, is that the pressure comes from the, from the citizenry, from the electorate, from the courts, from district attorneys, from the public defenders and the defense teams who are expecting objective proof in proceedings in court. They expect you to have that, and when you don't, that's a gap in your investigation, and it can mean you're losing a lot of cases. It means that offenders that should be incarcerated or not, and they're continuing to reoffend on the streets of your county. We came toward our evaluation of your services with looking at building a proper laboratory, ISO, credited to ISO seventeen oh-two-five, which is basically calibration and testing laboratory standards. Most crime labs in the United States are at that standard, or trying to achieve that standard. Ours was the first in the United States to achieve that. Placer County forensic services would drive the modernization of evidence ID and collection across the county. So when you have a great forensic architecture, like I just mentioned, it spreads excellence out to other branches of your law enforcement, and that's something that's very important as the county modernizes and as the county grows. Excellence in forensic testing will improve, will drive improvements across, across the, across the law enforcement field. That includes the coroner's office. So the coroner's office and the crime lab work together. Often, I've, I've been called to the coroner's office to sample from bodies for, for DNA services, for DNA analysis. On rape, murder cases, or serious, serious bodily injuries, serious murder cases, the forensic laboratory works in conjunction with the coroner's office. The other major part of this is toxicology. So the coroner's office and the law enforcement agencies use toxicology services. I just heard of a recent news story, was it yesterday, where you had two unfortunate, two young people killed in a car, a car accident at your school. Well, toxicology is going to play a key role in the, the investigation and the outcome of that case, and you have to have the ability to have toxicology quickly, and that's a great example of a case that would benefit from that. Currently, your modern, your coroner's facility does not support any kind of modern imaging. So there are many gaps that exist currently with your coroner, although Dennis and his team are doing a great job, but they're doing it despite the facility. So that leads into the key findings for the coroner's office. You have a workload which is both Placer County, but also Placer, or Yuba County, Nevada, and Sierra County, so they're bringing autopsies in from those counties and doing them currently. So you're doing about six hundred, about six hundred cases, which requires two-point-two autopsy tables on a five-day work week. Right now, you're operating, operating on an average of about one autopsy for a thousand population. That's about the high end of the national average. Partner counties are likely also to grow, but not able to support their own facility. So Placer will continue to provide those services on a fee, fee per service basis. So there's a revenue stream there. In twenty-thirty-five, you'll, you'll only generate about five hundred autopsies based on our projections, but the anticipated workload is about fifty percent greater than that with the other counties involved. We don't believe that'll go away. Dennis and his team are doing an outstanding job, but the antiquated facilities require modernization, and I'll say now. I think it's an important thing to understand that in major cases, things change quickly. You have a major homicide or a major crime in Placer County with a rigorous defense can often bring media attention very quickly, and I've lived through several of those. And I think that you have an opportunity today to get ahead of that problem, because the existing facility is not meeting current design standards and not meeting current environmental health standards. So we're going to move on to the recommendations. For the crime laboratory facility we envisioned for Placer County, we were talking about seven different disciplines that would be housed there. Latent prints is a very valuable system still. Fingerprints is still an amazing tool in forensic science, especially with modern fingerprint databases called AFIS. There have been great changes in the last two to three years in AFIS. In Denver alone, it increased our hit rate forty percent with the new algorithm. So this is something that you can take advantage of by having a latent print lab. Chemistry would be, drug chemistry would be hard drugs. So when people are caught with drugs, you have to prove that the drug is a certain drug. You can't just say it's cocaine or heroin, marijuana. Marijuana's interesting, and we can talk for hours on that. But, but chemistry is central.
In...
Yeah. Yeah. No. I'll leave that to questions. You still have to prove that a certain drug is a drug, even marijuana, and so chemistry is central to a crime lab operation in a major, it's a major center. Toxicology, as I just mentioned, is central to investigations and death investigations, but also driving under the influence investigations for alcohol, for drugs, and for other stimulants. We're proposing using that toxicology laboratory that would be shared between the coroner's office caseload and the crime lab caseload. DNA, it can't be understated. DNA, there are articles out there that show, I heard you mentioning from District Four, the return on investment statistics. DNA, there's a paper out there by Jennifer Doleak from the University of Virginia that shows that DNA today, if implemented with a proper database, is the most powerful law enforcement tool in 100 years. And in terms of return on investment, it is the best tool that can be used for major crimes, and actually also for property crimes. We've analyzed your property crime rates. You can use a DNA laboratory in Placer County. That, and I actually have return on investment statistics later. Firearms, live in the United States of America, firearms are a part of life. The tool of choice for criminals is typically a firearm. And again, there's a database system called NIBIN, which is a shell casing database. In Denver, we've led the nation with implementing that database and using it for criminal intelligence matters and getting to active shooters, and that's a whole other discussion, but it's something you should have onboard. And the other is digital and imaging. Computer crimes are growing double digits every year. You have to have the ability to interdict computer crimes, and a lot of the computer crimes are child porn cases and child pornography. And imaging is forensic imaging. It's the ability to analyze video. So all of our cell phones, 7-Eleven cameras, whatnot, we're seeing double-digit increases in our workload around forensic imaging, is what we call it. And that's the ability to take a video and get a still picture of a potential suspect in an armed robbery, a bank robbery, and get a Crime Stoppers bulletin out there to try to identify that person. So given your caseload, your population, we're recommending those seven sections. And we're also recommending, the next slide for the coroner, obviously, you need an autopsy suite. And then you'll also need a morgue to house the bodies, and that's something that Dennis expressed his great concern with, is the ability to store bodies properly. Imaging is also central to a coroner's service, because in all of these death cases, you need to have some form of imaging, modern imaging, to allow the coroner to determine the means and the manner of death. You'll also have office space for medical investigators or coroner's investigators. Their job is to go and determine family members and identify the deceased. So often, you can't identify deceased. You need investigators to figure that out with fingerprints, with any paperwork and other things. So it's an investigation, actually, to try to figure out a person's identity. Toxicology, as I mentioned, would be shared with the crime lab. And number six is histology. Histology is a medical laboratory that looks at tissue sections. We're actually not recommending you build that, because your caseload is not large enough yet for that, and they currently outsource that. But what we'd like to see is some shell space or some space built into the facility that in the future, as the caseload grows, you may be able to use that space to develop a histology laboratory.
So recommended service delivery model. First, we have five recommendations here. One is a single location for both the crime lab, as well as the coroner's office, to take advantage of proximity to one another. Also be ideal to have it close to other governmental organizations to take advantage of those proximities as well. We recommend close to Placer County courts with three years evidence storage is important. Allow efficient utilization of adjacent facilities and take advantage of proximities to one again, to one another, once again. Legal enforcement agencies, transport evidence to and from is also, would be helpful with the close proximity. And we also recommend, as indicated, both of those, the crime lab and the coroner's office being in a shared location. We did a brief analysis of what this, the size of this facility would look like, with the crime lab being 22,000, just over 22,000 net square foot translating into roughly 36,861 gross square feet, with a net to gross ratio of .60, which is typical of these, this facility type. The coroner's office also would be, including the crime, the autopsy spaces and all spaces associated with that, would be 12,000 net square feet, with translates to a gross of 21. And common areas, conference rooms, lobbies, and things that would be shared between the facilities, a net square foot of 5,000 translating into 8,000 gross. For a total facility of just under 39,000, just over 39,000, for the net square foot translating to 66, gross square foot and over. We have also a brief diagram of what these unique facilities would be, could translate into, given a typical site, or actually a generic site, 34,000 gross square feet per floor. You can see there that the crime lab being located on the second level, coroner's office and portions of the crime lab on the ground floor, too, to give you an idea to what this facility might look like in section. In plan, in Level 1, you see there's rather unique relationships between these spaces and a lot of visitors' parking and access. Both visitors, as well as service parking and access, is also vital. And we could go through the details of that, but in the interest of time, I think we could get into that if you have questions associated with those spaces on the Level 1. And this is what a typical planning diagram would look like for Level 2, with the crime lab offices on one end, and crime lab labs associated and building support on the other end. So this is just one typical. There's many ways that you could do that, but this is more typical of what you would see in a crime lab facility. So trends, moving into the actual anticipated costs that we developed, first off, we see on the left side, the crime lab annual operating expenses, with a staff of 17 currently from day one. We estimate 17 operating of just under $2 million a year. And then by 2035, adding an additional staff to increase, to support the population growth, and that translates to just over $4 million a year for annual operating costs. For the coroner's, coroner's facility, from day one, we recommend just utilizing the current staff that you have with the current budgets, but as population grows, up to 2035, estimate 23 staff with an operating of $1.2 million operating costs. In terms of construction and total costs, we procure the assistance of an independent cost estimator, one familiar with these types of facilities local to the area and recently completed a project similar in nature, because it's, there's not been one that's done recently here in the area. We, they gave it their best shot with our support and whatnot, provided with the various costs that you see before you right now. Roughly $607 a square foot is rather costly, but typical for this area, if you just oppose that to the national standards, which is, translates into a direct construction cost of $41,791, million, a direct construction site work. You see the breakdown there with a total construction cost of 45, just over 45 million. Escalating that to the midpoint of the construction, estimated to be 2017, with an escalation of 9.2, that adds an additional $4 million, for a total construction cost of just under $50 million. With the furnitures and consulting contingencies, it's an additional 30% on to that construction value of 14 million, just over, under 15 million, that translates to a total project cost of $64,258,000, estimated at this time. This is, of course, a rough estimate, but I think this is one to get you in the ballpark for a facility that you're looking to have. So I'll turn the time back over to Greg to summarize the return on investments.
So when we moved forward, we built a new facility that was open in 2012. We started our process in 2007. We started to try to get support from city council and from the leadership in Denver in 2005. The first question the mayor asked me, Mayor Hickenlooper, who is now our governor, he said, "Why do we need a crime lab?" Not, "Why do we need a crime lab building?", but, "Why do we need a crime lab?" Now, in Denver, we'd had a crime laboratory since 1937, so it wasn't anything new. So we started from a business, having to provide a business case. Now luckily, just prior to that, we had done a major project with the National Institute of Justice, answering a very simple question, is DNA effective at interdicting and catching property thieves, property crimes? The obvious answer would be yes, right? We got 550,000 from NIJ to study that as a research problem in conjunction with Institute of Legal Justice in Washington, DC. And what I'll say is, it was an obvious outcome. So we, here's some performance statistics from that project, and we've turned that into ROI. We actually published a return on investment paper on this in The Prosecutor a few years ago, I think it was 2008. But for our project, which was from '05 to about '07, that was funded by NIJ, this is the court filing rates for DNA cases. So that's cases where we found DNA in a property crime and put it on the database. When we first started the project, we started to put in DNA profiles that were collected from the crime scene, usually blood or saliva. Generally, it was blood. And blood is hard to explain inside your house. So when we put it into the database initially, we had an 80% match rate on the database. Eight out of 10 cases were matching to a person on the database when we first started. In other words, it was, it was a whole area of opportunity for us in law enforcement. On the left, our DNA cases, that's the filing rate of the cases. You had about 40% of them. If you had DNA on the case, about 40% of them were being filed by the district attorneys. If you didn't, if you had no DNA, you're at 4%. That's a tenfold increase in filing, which is important. When you look at Placer County's property crime rates, you have high-level property crime. This is an example of, if you have a DNA lab, you're going to have a tenfold increase in your filing rates almost immediately, if our experience holds, and I think it will. The percentage of the time the defendant pled to the top charge, now this is important from Scott's perspective, because our DA is very aggressive using science. His name is Mitch Morris. He's a national leader at this stuff, and he basically told all of his attorneys, "Do not plead these cases down. You plead them to the charge." So if you have DNA or fingerprints, and this slide is only for DNA, you plead them straight up to the charge. They don't get a reduction. So what this meant is, percentage of the time, the defendant pled to the top charge with DNA versus without DNA. So on the far left is, see if I can read it, is residential burglary, then commercial burglary, auto theft, theft from auto, so that's stealing a laptop from the automobile or a cellphone that's left out, the average. So you can see that you're up around 60 to 70% for commercial burglaries. You're just over 90% of the time these defendants are taking a plea. Now, you think of that in terms of return on investment, that Scots people don't have to go to court, you don't have to mount a defense. There's all of those costs that are being prevented or avoided by the defendant pleading straight up to the charge across all of your property crimes. Outcomes. Did a little bit of outcomes research. Basically, here's your guilty versus not guilty. With DNA is in blue. You're over 90% guilty with DNA. You're at about 30, what is that, 25%, 30% without? Now, this is dramatic. Not guilty with DNA, it barely was 1%. Without DNA, you're up around 60%. So the impact DNA technology with the database has on your county is that you're getting to the right people, and you're holding them accountable using technology. Sentence times, this is shocking, actually. The reason that the sentences are so high with DNA is because with DNA, you're connecting multiple crimes. So they're coming in, and in Colorado, we have a three strikes and you're outlaw, three felonies, and you get 25 to life. So what was happening is we were, we were getting what we call frequent flyers, people who are in the criminal justice system often, and they're, when you go to work, they're going to work burglarizing your house. And what we saw in our project was with DNA and linking multiple cases together, and Scott's team can now go to the, to the courts and say, "Well, we have them on six to eight property crime cases now, just with DNA." So without DNA, DNA is about 5% of the cases. You can imagine how many property crimes these people are perpetrating. And I'll give you one example from Denver. We have a very nice park. It doesn't have a falls, but it is a very nice park in the south side of Denver called Washington Park, probably our nicest park. Denver's known for having a lot of parks. And people go there, just like your falls, all across the weekend. We have parking problems, we have theft from motor vehicle problems at this park. And we also, all around the park, the houses, as you heard the residents, they have burglary problems of people breaking into their houses. It's a nice area of town. The people that live there have nicer stuff. So we caught a husband and wife team with DNA with blood spot that was found inside the entrance of a house, and a cigarette butt that was crushed on the kitchen floor. The people that lived in the house didn't smoke. We got the blood matched to one defendant who was in the, in the DNA database. The cigarette butt had his DNA and his wife's DNA on it, so we identified her also. We had him, after that, we matched him to five other burglaries with DNA. He was eating food inside the house, things like that, and leaving behind half-eaten tacos, which we got saliva from and matched him in the DNA. When he was arrested, and his wife was arrested, they were both facing lengthy charges, he testified in his wife's case to try to mitigate the amount of sentence time she got. When he testified in defense of his wife, he admitted over 1,000 burglaries that he had never been caught on. And then later, he admitted on a murder where he killed a guy in a burglary, in a burglary attempt that was an unsolved murder case. So the important statistic here is, after this husband and wife team were apprehended and they were led, they were basically identified with DNA, the property crime rate in West Washington Park dropped 46%. That's one couple. The average sentence time we see in residential burglaries across our project time was 12 to 16 years in prison because of the multiple cases. So what you're getting after is you're getting after your prolific burglars. They're out there, they're working in your community, that's what they do for a living. So we started to quantitate this. We started to look at, well, how cost-effective is this? We know how much we're paying for the DNA services, and this is just DNA on property crimes, and this is how I answered the mayor's question. The cost of a police response, these are $2,008 to a burglary, is a patrol officer goes to a report. We figured out how much time on average, we figured out what they get paid, et cetera. $461 a case. In that time period, we captured 95 habitual burglars. We identified and captured 95 of them. That resulted in a prevention of about 10,888 cases due to the identifications. That's over that 10 to 12 years that they spent in jail on average. Cost savings was $41.8 million in police response not occurring, crime lab analysis not occurring, and then all of the stolen goods that weren't being fenced off, so that stereos and cell phones and televisions and computers. So basically, the return on investment for our DNA investment was 1 to 92. And when I brought that to the mayor, when he asked me the question on the street corner, he says, "What's your ROI?" And I told him it's 1 to 92. "How do you know that?" I told him why we did it. And that's just for DNA on property crimes. That doesn't include murder cases, sexual assaults, all the drug cases, the DUIs and the other things that are a crime laboratory, which does 12,000 to 16,000 cases a year process, okay? This is just focused on one type of crime using one technology. It's probably more like 1 to 9,200. And he said, "Well, I was going to compete you against the Performing Arts Center, which is 1 to 14." And they were putting 180 million into that. So at the end of the project, we apprehended over 200, it's actually over 240 prolific burglars. So the return on investment became multiples of the 1 to 92. I think that speaks for itself. And it's hard to do this. It's hard to take criminal justice, criminal justice activities and turn it into an ROI, but we're doing our best. So this is an evolution of our project from 2007 to 2008. Where was our property crimes rate? We're comparing ourselves to similar cities here between 550,000 to 675. So you see the cities on the right. Denver had a 3%. We were actually up 3% around 2007. And as our project started to roll and take hold in Denver, we started to see the decreases in property crimes. First year that it took hold, we had an 8% decrease in property crimes. Rolled it out to the next year, another 5% decrease. At the end of the project, we had actually realized a 40% decrease in property crimes because of identifying and neutralizing the 200 and some prolific burglars that were working in our city. And I think that is an amazing return on investment for forensic services.
That concludes our presentation. We'll certainly address any questions that you may have regarding it or anything relative to it. Jennifer.
Was that Jim or Jen?
Pardon?
Is that Jim or Jen?
Oh, Jennifer.
Jennifer.
I apologize.
Was that Jim or Jen? It's a long ways back, but could you go back to slide number 11, please?
Which one would that be? Relative to what?
Yeah, there's numbers at the bottom there, on the right-hand side for slide number 11.
Gotcha. There we go.
Right there. Just because I'm a little bit sensitive about this, is there some reason eastern Placer County isn't included in this?
No. Other than just the graphic.
In terms of, we're not, like, suggesting that we not, it's not even on the map.
It was a graphic. No, I think, I think, no, there's no, no specific reason other than we just didn't extend it out. Sorry about that.
Okay.
It is included.
Eastern Placer County residents would have the
Exactly, yes.
...access to these as well? Okay.
Yes.
I'm just a little sensitive about this.
The dotted lines keep going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we just can't see them.
Jennifer's house isn't on the map.
Yeah, I'm like, so when I kill my husband... Yeah, I'm like, so when I kill my husbands, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be okay, apparently.
You'll be the number one suspect now.
Other than the video here, yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
You would anyway.
Um, and then I did have a question about, um, slide eighteen, which is a couple forward from there. Uh, so the costs are estimated at sixty-four million roughly.
Uh-huh.
Um, who are our partners who are envisioned in this? Because I, I know that when we talked about this earlier, there was an idea that, you know, there was a real opportunity here for some partnerships, maybe with other cities, other counties. Have, have we had conversations with our other partners about what they could bring to the table? Probably not a question for you, sorry.
Scott, come to the mic.
Here on camera.
We certainly have had conversations, not only with our local police agencies, but also local surrounding counties. There's a lot of interest. Our thoughts were that those partnerships suit us better, uh, after the lab is built, as far as ongoing, on, on economy of scale, ongoing costs, um, developing new technologies, uh, without bringing other boards, other, other agencies in, um, at this stage before, before the, the lab is actually built.
Okay, because I think, um, and again, very supportive of the, of the idea of going forward with this. I've had, you know, unfortunately constituents who have come to me who have said, we've been waiting a year for results. We haven't had them. Not our fault, it's our partnership that we've got going. Um, I had a lovely lady from First Hill who literally almost lost her father's home after he passed away because we couldn't get a death certificate. Um, so I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to moving forward with this. I think it's well beyond time that we started tackling this. Um, I, I do, as we move forward, want to get a better idea of who our partners are going to be and what we think they can actually bring to this discussion, because it's, you know, sixty-four million dollars is a big chunk of change, and that's just construction. So-
It is. The, the difficulty is in tying those down. One, uh, that, you know, the, the DA's there in elected positions, same as I am. Um, so it's difficult for them without a lab being built to, 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 to indicate exactly what their commitment was, because that, 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 that position might change in the future. Cliff Newell, the Nevada County District Attorney, said, when, when do you need me to come down and talk to your board? I, I mean, as soon as he heard we were, we were thinking about doing this project. Uh, Vern Pearson, Eldorado County, said, are you going to be doing DNA? Because I got a lot of work for you. Um, Yolo County has asked, uh, uh, you know, if there's anything that we can do to, to resolve the situation locally, because they're going through a lot of the, uh, um, same problems that we are as far as our, our current level of services. So there is a big demand that's out there. Um, at a local meeting, um, you know, it was brought up, I didn't, I was not the one this time that brought it up about the, the level of services that we're currently getting. Um, so there's a lot of demand out there. We're still in the process of kind of ident- identifying exactly what and who. Each one of those, uh, relationships is probably going to look a little bit different. Um, and, and so we're just not there yet, I guess.
So I, I would love to talk to your counterparts at Nevada County and Eldorado County, understanding that they can't commit any future district attorney to anything in particular, but just to sort of gauge their, their interest.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely, yes.
Kirk.
Uh, two questions. First, um, on the, the slide just, oh, you already jumped, that's all right. Um, the one where you were talking about facility size, you were showing net square feet to gross square feet. On, uh, the crime lab and the common area, you had the same multiplier. You have a greater percentage, uh, of gross square feet over net square feet on the corner. I'm just curious why that is.
Yeah, typically corners, corners require a little more additional circulation space. So the net to gross is a little higher than you would on a crime lab. A lot of crime lab is associated with, with, there's a lot of office component, which is a lower net to gross ratio. So that's, that's the reason for that.
Okay. Uh, and then, um-
In average, you're talking around about point six, oh, sixty percent net to gross ratio.
Yeah, it was, it was sixty-six on the other two and seventy-two on the, on the corner, I believe is what I got. Um, and then your, your final slides where you're showing the, the return on investment, um, I noticed that on the first year of your, that you measured, um, no, keep going, where you're comparing against other cities, I'm sorry. Two, keep going, keep going. There it is. Uh, the first year, you got Portland down there at minus twelve, and then at the very end, Portland finished next to you guys. You dropped all the way to the, the, the best in terms of the outcomes there on the last slide.
Right.
Keep going. And, keep going, one more. And there you are.
Yep.
Uh, and you still have Portland doing very well. What, what did Portland do?
Okay. So what Portland did was they, they did a study on their property crimes, and they found out the majority of their property crimes was, was driven by the methamphetamine problem they were having in the city. And what they did is they changed their rules around ephedrine sales, and they basically stopped it where you can buy more than one package of something with ephedrine in it, and they put it behind, uh, lock counters. And as soon as they did that, a lot of their, uh, homegrown methamphetamine problem dried up, and so, so did the property crimes project. It was tied directly to methamphetamine. Okay, interesting. Thank you.
Jack.
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, very good information. And we haven't met yet, but, uh, myself along with, um, Judge Paneshi co-authored the, uh, master plan that was presented to the board. Um, you know, and I've been a huge supporter. I'm former law enforcement, or not law enforcement, but DOJ, uh, interacted with, uh, our DOJ crime lab during my tenure as a, representing the Department of Corrections. So very, very familiar with how, how the DOJ, uh, crime lab works. But one of the questions that I have is oversight, all right? How do we, because there's some, and we've read it all in the news, that, you know, sometimes these places and people in them, we've had problems in Sacramento, uh, they're places where things are manufactured. Who is the oversight? Can you explain that? Because I know the public is going to want to know that whatever's done here is going to be reliable and not influenced by anybody. So speak to that.
Who would you like to speak to that?
I'd like you to start with what your oversight is.
Armed in Denver?
As, no, as far as are there any federal standards? What is the testing done?
Yep.
How are those things taken care of? Who, who is, who, uh, is in charge of the crime lab? You know?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, so running a crime labs is, is not a simple business. Uh, it is a very highly complex area. Um, when problems go wrong, they go wrong. Uh, it's, is akin to a train wreck sometimes. So in Denver, where I'm from, I report to the chief, I report to the deputy chief, basically to the chief. So we're under a police agency. There are some entities out there, like the National Academy of Sciences, that believe we shouldn't be part of a police agency. Um, I, I actually say that it's how you run your business that matters. It doesn't matter really who your boss is, because if the chief came to me and told me to, told me to do something unethical, I just frankly wouldn't do it. Uh, and I may put my career on the line to do, to do that, to say that. So, um, many crime labs report to district attorneys. In California, it's actually a common model. The, the crime lab is under the district attorney. There are some models out there in Baltimore, uh, excuse me, in Baltimore. In Washington DC, they had a major problem with their crime lab. They were relying on the FBI, and it just wasn't cutting it. They weren't getting the results. So they opened their own metropolitan crime laboratory. It's run by a board of governors, and the director reports to the board of governors. So there are many models out there. In terms of standards, I, I think the standards are more important than who you report to. Uh, your leadership of your crime lab is also very important, because you want to have leadership that understands the standards. The standards are not just something that you work to, to get the certificate to stick on the wall. The standards are something you have to build a culture around. I was successful in doing that when I took over our crime lab in two thousand and five, and I made no bones about it. And there were some people that weren't happy about it. But the standards under ISO are very stringent. They're the most stringent in the world. And to meet those standards takes a lot of effort upfront. If you have a, an operating crime lab, it takes thirty to forty percent of every individual's time to prepare to meet those standards, and about fifteen percent of their time to continue to meet those standards. For the DNA database, for example, on top of the ISO standards, there's what are called the DAB or the DNA Advisory Board Standards, now called the SWIGDAM standards, a scientific working group on DNA analysis methods. There are rules set out by, uh, working groups out in the forensic community, as well as the CODIS database, that are in stone, that you have to follow those rules. I think for any mishandling of the DNA databank, you're looking at a thirty thousand dollar fine and time in jail. And the other thing is you've never heard anybody violate that, because you would have heard it had, had there been a violation of the use of the DNA database, and you've never heard that from the DNA database. So we have to follow the rules set out by the FBI to connect into the national DNA database. You also have to follow the rules for AFIS, which is the Automated Fingerprint Identification System in a similar way, as well as NIBIN, which is the National Integrated Ballistic Identification Network. So all of these databases have secure T-one lines that go directly into NSA-level encryption, that go back to the federal database. So some, uh, the NIBIN is with ATF. Uh, AFIS is within the state, so you would connect back to the CalDOJ for that. And the, um, CODIS would connect to the state and also to the national system in Virginia. So there are a lot of rules and regulations that are audited against. So for example, in CODIS and AFIS, uh, every few years, we will be notified in a very short time period of GAO audit. The federal government sends GAO out, uh, the Government Accounting Office, and they will come out and do audits of our CODIS operations. Um, one of the things about the culture, when you set up a culture around standards, you have to set up an audit-friendly culture. If anybody's ever been an auditor, the last thing you want to see when you walk into a, an agency is defensiveness. Because if they're defensive, you think right away they're hiding something. Usually, actually, they are. Uh, you want to build a culture that's open, transparent, and operating according to scientific, the scientific method. That's no, people out there know how to do that. Uh, it's still something that's evolving, uh, but anybody who says that forensic science does not operate according to standards is not aware of forensic science. Uh, it's just like what I like to say is testing. If you go to the grocery store and you buy milk, do you test it before you drink it? Or you just go ahead and drink the milk, or the pop, or whatever? I see you're eating some kind of nuts. You didn't test that before you ate it, right? You just went ahead-
Canary and the cage.
His own tester.
Uh, but you understand that you're, you're relying on testing there. You're relying on some governmental oversight, uh, with respect to your food products. That's the same in forensic science. And that's what builds public confidence, and that's something that has to be central to the culture that you create.
And that, and that's good. And, and just for your knowledge, I, I knew ninety percent of what you're talking about. But I think it's important for the public to know, because by doing this, we're giving the DA a very powerful tool.
Absolutely.
And they need to know that it is on the up and up. And I'm, and I have every faith in Scott and his department, but they just need to know why we're doing it and what the, what, what the safeguards are with regards to how it's going to, how it's going to operate.
And the way you can help with that in the county is when they're audited, um, you want to have it where, upon request, I wouldn't put everything up on the internet for criminal justice purposes, criminal justice document protection. But, um, I, the way I work is if somebody has an interest on how we did on an audit, I'll invite them in to look at the audit documents, and I'll sit there and answer questions. And I'm always across the street from the courtroom, which I think the plan is here to be close to the courts, and it's important. They can always subpoena me at the, at any minute. I'll go and speak to it. Because I'm an integral component of our quality system. And a quality system is central to ISO. And I'll tell you what's happening in Denver, is that I'm a very strict adherent to ISO. I, I, probably you've picked up on my accent, not being quite American, but close, right? Um, a little north of you there. Um, Canadian system is very tied around the Standards Council of Canada and ISO. And Canada's been, most of Canada's governmental services have been ISO certified since about nineteen sixty-four. It's kind of the way we operate. Um, that gives you a lot of defendability of your product. It makes your product very defendable. And I will tell you, we've been certified in Denver for now eight years. We're the first municipal lab in the United States under ISO, and a lot of people were very angry with me about doing it. Some even retired, left. But today, in two thousand and sixteen, what I can compare to, what I did when I was a young guy in nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-five, the defendability of that work product is enormously better. That when we get asked to go to court and defend those forensic results, it's rock solid. It doesn't mean we don't make mistakes, but we document them and have corrective actions and preventative actions, and we can demonstrate that the system is working. And, and that's the whole discussion on leadership and how you accomplish that.
And, and understanding that the defense, uh, has the obligation to bring these issues up.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that when we, uh, the ship sails, that we're on the up and up. And I'll have some suggestions that I'll make, uh, with regards to organ, or administration and, and other kinds of things later on. But, no, this is, um, this is a good thing, and I think it brings, um, uh, some very good opportunities, um, that we can tear off of, uh, down the road.
It's a game changer.
Oh, yeah.
For real, for your county. And as, as you're growing, uh, to, you're going to have modern tools available. And basically, what I've said to people in Denver is not here. If you come here-
Today's the day of game, of change in the game, all, all across the board.
It's great, it's great to have your expertise.
Uh, I don't see any more questions, comments from the board. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Tom?
Good morning. I'm Tom Jones. I live in Auburn, California, Supervisory District Five. Uh, I have in front of me a letter that Bill Lockyer wrote when Attorney General in two thousand and three, talking about the crisis in forensic labs in California. And he, being, uh, aggressive and for this, created a task force. And in two thousand and nine, they gave their result, and they said, yep, it's still terrible. I think that you fellows and ladies have shown some visionary ideas. Uh, we are not going to get the kind of justice necessary, or the witness information necessary. DNA is the silent witness. We need to have our own ability to take care of our citizens. In metropolitan areas today, there are rape cases, murder cases, that the district attorney has to let them walk because the DNA or the evidence, the forensic evidence is not available. San Francisco admits a three-year backlog in rape kits. That's not acceptable in Placer County. Uh, let's work together. There's grants out there. We've got neighboring counties. We could do what like we did with our drug abuse and, and make joint, uh, requests for whatever funding might be out there, and we can maybe shake down a few pharmaceuticals. But, uh, this is important. It's been overlooked for thirteen years. It's time to move on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen none. Um, I know, uh, we were to receive an update and then provide you direction as to how we want to proceed. And again, it's not formally set in the form of a motion, I guess. So are you looking for comments? Do you have enough now? Or I'm sure people might want to add some things I do, but, uh-
Yeah, I'd, I'd like, just in the comments, in terms of direction moving forward, um, I, I do want to ask staff to continue development at the analysis of, uh, operational costs, um, but also to work closely with our treasurer tax collector on financing options to determine, you know, what different options do we have out there? Because there's a wide array of ways we could potentially finance this. And I think we need to, uh, look to our, uh, our brain trust to figure out the best way to do it that's most effective and quickest, frankly, for Placer County residents.
I want to just go down like, Kirk, do you have anything else to add other than your comments? Jack?
Uh, Jim?
So I'll just add, uh, nothing that I heard, by the way, that I didn't agree with as relates to my colleagues. Um, I would focus, um, as someone with a finance background, on the return on investment notion, oftentimes that can be very subjective. And so, in this case, something that's much more simple that is of a concern of mine, I'm sure is a concern of everyone's. But I just, I want to look at the hard cold card, uh, hard cold dollars that, uh, you know, what is the total cost of all of this for us now, regardless of the, the level of service, as compared to what it's likely to cost us? I like those kinds of analysis. I want it to be exhaustively thorough, because whereas, I think the notion has huge amounts of merit, and it's, uh, potentially very exciting, and I understand the issue and the problem, uh, public pretension, protection is something that you can spend limits, limitless amounts of money on. We have the burden to balance that against all of our priorities. And in fact, uh, some of the non-public protection investments can in fact have an impact on our quality of life and the safety of our communities. Um, so I just want to look at the simple hard cold dollars. What's it costing us now? What's it likely to cost us in the future, including the, the population number projections look to be about right? But, um, you know, frankly, I'm concerned about our growth being actually a lot slower than, uh, the rate that's expressed here. Um, it's a different economy post-two thousand and eight. Um, and then included in that is how we're going to fund all of this stuff. And I'm very concerned to make sure, uh, that we fund it appropriately. For example, um, I don't want to create an incentive to create a funding stream that's not appropriate. And I want to add to that, that whereas I also am comfortable with the management scheme and Scott's integrity, that this operation would be run properly now, none of us are going to be in our positions forever. Uh, there are abuses that do occur. They do occur in public protection. Um, and I think it is important not only to have, uh, the right people in place managing the system, but the right management structure. I do think that that management structure does actually make a difference in that some structures will encourage sloppiness or even corruption. Um, and other- structures will encourage sloppiness or even corruption, and others will make sure that